Alderman, ladies and gentlemen, can I ask please to stand for the merits of your parents, Alderman, Doug Chikman.
Good evening everyone and thank you very much. Before proceeding, I'd like to just pause for a moment to reflect on the terrible atrocity that took place in Christchurch and the at least 50 people that were killed there and many, many others that have been so badly affected by that nasty incident. So let's pause for a moment to consider the people affected by that. Please you to recite the council prayer.
Almighty God, we humbly beseech thee to vouchsafe thy blessing upon this council, direct in prosperous deliberations to the advancement of thy glory and the true welfare of the people of the city of Clarence. Amen.
Thank you. I'd like to acknowledge Tasmanian Aboriginal community as the traditional custodians of the land that we're meeting on tonight and pay our respects to elders past and present and remind the meeting that we are being recorded audio visually and it will be available on the council website later this week. Thank you. Set meeting open. Note that there are no apologies. Item two is confirmation of minutes for 25th of February is circulated. We take this read and confirm. Alderman Blomley, second Alderman, Alderman Ewington. All those in favour? Carried unanimously. Under item three, a couple of reports under Mayor's Communication. Firstly, in regard to the High Court case concerning Southern Cross Care. On the 13th of March, the High Court refused leave to appeal the decision of the full court, the Supreme Court of Tasmania. In regard to the independent living units, for example, at Southern Cross Care. The High Court's refusal means that the decision of the full court is now part of Tasmanian law. The decision of the High Court also awarded costs against council. Costs will be taxed in due course in accordance with the rules covering such things and we don't yet have a handle on exactly what those costs will be. The impact of the Southern Cross Care decision has brought implications for council and for other councils. In terms of Clarence, the following is a high level summary of the likely rates implications. There are currently four major charitable organisations with independent living unit properties within the municipality. For the fiscal years 1819, the loss of rate income from these properties will be about There are two new independent living unit properties currently being developed and the estimated loss of income from those will be approximately $36,000 per annum. There are a number of other known charities which will also be entitled to an exemption and these properties will result in an estimated loss of another $30,000 for the year of 2018-19. The current total estimate for loss of rate income from the Southern Cross Care case is between $175,000 and $200,000 per year. To maintain a neutral budget position based on current services, an increase of between 4.8% and 1% increase in the general rate to each ratable property would be required. There may be other charitable organisations that are unknown to us at this point who come forward as a consequence of this decision. It is not known what quantum of income could be affected. A further consequence of the High Court decision is that legislative change is now the only option available to councils wishing to rate charitable organisations who have independent living units. Of significance, Brighton Municipal Council has put on the agenda for the Elgat General Meeting on the 29th of March, a motion that Elgat take up advocacy with the state government to have the Local Government Act amended to provide for rates certainty and social equity. Happy to take any questions on that very important outcome. Alderman James.
Yes, thanks Mr. Mayor. Given that you have abstained from any of the debate in relation to the Southern Cross matter and the general exemption of rates and given it's going to be a continuation to the legislative facility, will you excuse yourself and not participate in any further debate given that you are resident of Southern Cross Homes, the Fairway Rise Retirement village?
Thank you Alderman James. Now that is a matter of the law of the land, I don't feel so that I'm in a position to influence the decision one way or another, therefore I have no conflict of interest and I believe I should do my duty as Mayor of this city.
Just on that, there are further ramifications associated with that through Elgat which you are currently resident of. So isn't there a particular conflict of interest for you either to pursue that or otherwise not to pursue it in your role as President of Local Government Association of Tasmania?
Certainly consider that as we approach the general meeting. Thank you.
Appreciate that. Thanks.
Alderman Mulder. I think a further point and clarification and isn't it the case though that the conflict of interest only arises whilst you are the decision maker, not a potential beneficiary or otherwise? So you know, I would think under those guises that the conflict of interest has ceased since the matter has been settled in law.
That's a point I'll consider as well in making my decision. Any other questions on the outcome of that? I'd like to report on another court issue in regard to Hobart International Airport Partry Limited where council is in dispute over the rating equivalent or the excrusher rates payments that are made by Hobart Airport to council. That matter is before the federal court and the federal court commenced hearings with the airport regarding the method of calculating those rates. Opening statements and related matters were heard on the 14th and 15th of March just passed. A directions hearing has been scheduled for mid-June and further hearing dates for the 22nd to the 26th of July and I'll certainly keep council up to date with developments along that front. Happy to take any questions in that regard. Thank you. Moving on to item four, that council notes workshops conducted on the 4th and 12th of March and the agenda brief on the 15th of March. Thanks Alderman Pearce, second Alderman Blomley. All those in favour? Carried unanimously. Item five is declarations of interest of Alderman or close associate. Alderman Kennedy. Thank you. No petitions in the agenda. At item six, are there any petitions from the floor? Thank you. Public question time. At item seven, there are no matters on notice. Are there any questions from members of the public without notice? Yes. Can you come forward please? And I would ask all questioners if they could identify themselves and their address.
Michael Fig representing the Advanced Lord of Dale Association. I'd like to table a document and pass these around to the Alderman. We're not allowed to talk about something on the agenda tonight but I'd ask the question, when we had the Lord of Dale feasibility study and we talked about stormwater, it was stated in there quite strongly that the last two people, my property and the property next to me, had to pay $2 million to each to upgrade the stormwater. In the paper that I've just presented, if you wish to look at it, there's nothing in the issue coming up with Lord of Dale tonight about anything to do with stormwater. Also, I asked the question, beg your pardon?
If you could focus on a question.
I am focusing on the question in relation to the handout. I also asked the question, why is there nothing about the conservation of nippican fauna, threatened fauna and soil types which are so close to the development? We are not against the development, in fact we're 100% for it. The question goes, and if you have a look on the last page, this one here with the double photographs, you'll see a circle of an open drain. That open drain in 2005, it's channeled the water from Acton Road down into the properties below. In 2017, you'll see that there's an open drain, you can't really see it in that programme but there's an open drain there to catch the water, which is ineffective and is maintained by Clarence Council. That's in the same property area that the development is on tonight. If you turn to the last page, you'll see where the stormwater is going from that area into the neighbouring property and this is after it has dropped by about three inches. I asked the question, and I have asked it before, when is council going to be compliant with its stormwater in Lord of Dale? You'll notice that the Tasmania Urban Drainage Act states the obligation of stormwater service provider, which is you, must provide an adequate public stormwater system, local government authorities to deliver of stormwater services.
Answer the question now, Mr. Pearce?
When I've asked it. The last bit which I've been pursued on in the past is that...
Point of order, Mr. Mayor, the question has already been asked.
There's one further question. Property owners not to direct stormwater onto neighbouring properties. Can you please tell why this hasn't been addressed in this report and why it's been looked at with a microscope with the feasibility study of Lord of Dale and has been overlooked? Could you please provide an answer?
Thank you. Are there any other questions from members of the public? Thank you. Item eight is deputations by members of the public.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have one deputation this evening. Robin McNichol of South Arm wishes to address council in relation to best practice consultation.
As you're coming forward, I do need to remind you that there's only a three minute window for opportunity to speak and if you can catch that on the screen there, you actually see it down there, but there will be a warning 30 seconds to go. When you're ready.
My name's Robin McNichol, I live at 3246 South Arm Road. I am part of the Clarence Action Networker group arose because we are a group of people who are concerned about our public spaces in Clarence. We value the extensive fragile coastline and areas reserved for conservation, recreation and parklands. Our mutual concerns relate to development projects which inhabit the public space and have been permitted before, prior to council consultation. We individuals are faced with a situation where we're compelled to discuss and develop conservations with council and our own communities in order to be listened to. Members of CAN have combined to ask council for genuine, meaningful and active consultation processes. I will now go through several examples where meaningful consultation has not occurred for projects on public land. Armend is a public reserve that was bought by the state government for the community. It was reserved for its high recreational values and its high natural and cultural heritage values. These were identified and that's why it was reserved. After being reserved in 2011, a permit application was launched in 2012 for a golf course development. In no time did the council ask the community if golf was appropriate to recreation in the reserve. They never discussed whether we considered it would conflict with walking. Calvin and Oval is a master plan, well is another example. A master plan was issued to the community with a ticker box checklist. This is not an engaging consultation process and it is no way to conduct meaningful feedback. It represents an impossible design process. The council thought that speaking with a small number of youths was enough to justify $250,000 infrastructure and issued a master plan which set out the skate park as a fait accompli. Community groups such as Coast Care, the garden club, women with small children were never asked what their aspirations for the park was. Many individuals, including myself, are always told by council that it's not their fault, they couldn't do anything, however we think this is when best practice consultation should be conducted. Last year, consultation was flagged as an issue to run campaigns on by Alderman and to quote the mayor, one of my aims by the end of my four-year term is to see Clarence City Council be regarded as one of the best councils in Tasmania in regards to community consultation.
We are out of time. Be really happy to receive a written copy of what you made tonight and circulate it to the Alderman. Thank you.
No further speakers, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Moving on to motions on notice, 9.1, Alderman Mulder. Do we have a seconder? Alderman Pearce, thank you. Alderman Mulder.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and thank you to the seconder. This motion is about our current practices in regard to waste management and I think we have had and still do have quite good practices. That doesn't mean it can't be improved and that doesn't mean the situation in which we are managing waste isn't changing. And it is. Community expectations are changing, the science and the technology for waste management is changing and there are also issues relating to our usual, our former pipeline of, you know, Asian countries in particular, taking our material sometimes without much concern over what actually became of that material because it was, its purpose, there was very little in terms of looking through the whole chain of process. In regards to the green waste, I think Alderman Walker deserves to be congratulated because I think some years ago now he was responsible for instituting the green waste collection which I think has proved to be a very popular and well-used facility within the city. But the opportunity, that's once a month collection, but we're now moving towards the area of collecting food organics and as well as green organics and those sorts of things can't be collected left rotting in your garbage bin out the front of the driveway for a whole month before they're collected. So if we're going to move down the FOGO path, as it's called, then we need to have a look at the frequency of that collection and then what we do with it and we've set things up in copping quite well. My concern which has raised since I've submitted this motion is our knee-jerk reactions to some of the things around plastics. Now plastics themselves are actually recycled waste oil products. So if we didn't make them into plastics, we would have some pretty nasty bits and pieces of chemicals running around the environment. So they already are recycled. But there's been a lot of talk lately about, I think China and some other Asian countries have decided they're getting too much of it and they can't actually process it. And the problem with the current processing methods, and they make some excellent building materials and construction materials, they are road bases and things like that. But in this day and age where we're concerned about energy and the emissions that occur when we're burning fossil fuels, these things to turn them into, to repurpose them require some great, shall we say, vast amounts of energy and water and these are two commodities that we're trying to manage. The possibility of course, and technology's always changing, and something that's occurred to me before is this stuff, if we could get it into landfill, we could put it into positions and sort it and we could actually use it and then later on go back and mine it. One of the examples that I've heard is that the copper concentration in the Hobart tip is greater than what it is in Mount Loa. Of course, extracting it when it's co-mingled with everything else is where the problem lies and why we don't use it. Yet here's an opportunity perhaps to go down the path of actually burying our plastics and hoping they'll come too. So the thing is about having a report on what our current waste strategy stream is, how we're managing it, whether it's ending up where we think it's ending up, our recyclables and also to have a look at upping the ante perhaps in terms of green waste collection and things like energy production from high incineration of waste. So there are some of the things that I think I look forward to getting a briefing on at a workshop.
Thank you, Mayor. Look, I can carry with Alderman Mulder, I think it's a very good motion because I think we look at options and bring this back to a workshop is certainly the way to go. Food organics and green organics, FOGO, as we, those that attended the Local Government Association Conference, we heard about FOGO itself and at that stage in the conference in June, July, there was only about eight councils in Australia doing it but I'm sure that number's certainly grown and I think if we've got a chance to be one of those, that would be fantastic. So I totally support the recommendation, Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, thank you and I too rise to support this motion this evening. I acknowledge the Deputy Mayor, Glanorki City Council of Alderman, Matt Stevenson, who's in the public gallery tonight because Glanorki City Council has been leading the way in the food organics and green organics recycling in their city because they surveyed their residents in, I believe, November last year. 1300 respondents, 90% of those respondents saying that they firmly support FOGO services and that class is being important or very important. So that's a council, a council that actually has engaged with their community and I note and recall a workshop that we had in January or early February this year where we were going to survey our residents and I note that there's another motion on the agenda paper tonight too that also references that proposed survey of our residents. I understand the Glanorki City Council officers are preparing a business case to be considered next Monday, so council meeting of Glanorki City and I, like many other members of the public, would have a great interest to see what the business case comes back to say. But my view is that one option that ought to be considered very seriously at a workshop and by this council into the future is establishment of a working group of councils. I mean, as novel as this approach is to have a, if you like, collaboration on this issue between Clarence, Hobart, Glanorki and maybe even Kimbra, the four councils to get together and then look at what we can actually do together working as one into the collaboration of councils with a very tight timeframe to identify what the issues are and how we can actually make this a reality. So I congratulate the mover of the motion tonight and very much look forward to the workshop.
Thanks Alderman Blomley. Other speakers? Alderman Walker.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Now, it was mentioned, my name did come up by the mover in relation to green waste and whilst I did indeed go loud and proud on that in the 2011 election, it's important to, whilst trying to grab a brick back here or there, understand that every decision is made around the table and so this council did come together to make the decision. It's getting into the weeds a little bit, but one of the reasons we do green waste collection here monthly is because it doesn't have a universally high collection rate. There's plenty of houses that don't wish to participate. This would be one of the challenges about bringing that forward because those households will keep paying up for non-collections if we increase the frequency. We've been quite pragmatic in that space by saying, you've got more green waste, we'll you know, in a user pays way, you can get another bin. Our household's certainly got two green waste bins. I do support the motion and we do want to advance this area and there's nothing in this motion that should be in any way threatening in any form. Obviously, I also think that one of the important things is what I've tediously referred to some is the laboratory's a democracy model. Clarence took the lead on green waste. It wasn't something of waiting for consensus of 29 councils or all the southern councils to do before we moved ahead and in this space, if other councils take the lead, you can watch from there, you can watch and see their failings or see their successes and adopt where you go and I think that's what Hobart did over time in the green waste pick-up space. I support the motion.
Try to reply, Alderman Mulder.
I take up Alderman Blomley's point about forming a committee but then forming a group of councils to take action across the board. Yes, I can see the benefit of that but as we will debate a little later on, I think in relation to other motion, it's about time we stopped thinking of ourselves as 29 councils. It's about time we stopped thinking of ourselves as five councils or three regions and 18 councils. It's about time we realised that with a population of half a million, there should be no councils other than, you know, an appropriate...
I wonder if we could stick to the item at hand, Alderman Mulder?
I was responding to a matter raised in the debate. You didn't express the concern then. So really I think that some of those things require a statewide approach but that doesn't stop a council, as Glanorki are doing with their FOGO, as we did with the green waste bins, to set an example of how it can be done. And it's particularly a case of a city the size of Clarence, half a million, the half a million people. The population task force is achieving its objectives quite well it seems. But to have, you know, a population of around about the 40,000 to 50,000 mark, I think which is more likely, more reality, is we are in a position, we have the size and we have the thing and if it means that we have the green waste and a weekly FOGO in a smaller bin, I would think that would be fine. Personally, I think that the putrescibles and the green waste could probably be thrown into the same bin but that'd be collected weekly because I think it ends up in the same thing. But these are all ideas that we can explore at a workshop and time doesn't permit me to go in and debate all of them but I'm just welcome to contributions that have been made and ask for support.
So the motion before the council is as depicted by Alderman Mulder. All those in favour? Carried unanimously. Item 9.2 is notice motion, Alderman Blomley.
Mr. Mayor, I move the motion standing in my name.
Thank you. Do we have a seconder please? Alderman Kennedy, I think, was first off the mark. Alderman Blomley, would you like to speak to your motion?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, I'll be brief on this one. I think colleagues know the passion I have for the Tasmanian tourism industry because it's such an outstanding success story. It's something that all of us as Tasmanians deserve to be very proud of. However, this hasn't happened by accident. It has been achieved through industry and government at all three tiers, working hand in glove to showcase Tasmania to both international and national audiences. However, we can't take it for granted and we can't rest in our laurels. We need to ensure that we continue to provide a quality and authentic Tasmanian experience. We know that many of our visitors, some 60%, for them, Hobart Airport is the first or last stop. The past four years, Hobart Airport has experienced 6% year-on-year growth with 2.6 million passengers making their way through the terminal in the past year. As first and last impressions do matter, the visually unappealing and totally uninspiring journey on the Tasman Highway from Hobart Airport to Tasman Bridge, due in large part to the poor maintenance roadside vegetation, significantly detracts from our beautiful state and the overall visitor experience. The state government has responsibility for this stretch of highway whilst there has been positive moves in recent years to increase the frequency of roadside mowing, a great deal more and can, and a great deal more should, be done. Simply put, what better way to showcase the beauty and the pride we all share in our state than by ensuring the gateway for many of our visitors is of the quality and the standard we can all be proud of? My motion tonight calls for the state government to work with us to improve the appearance of the Tasman Highway from the airport roundabout to the Tasman Bridge and this could take many forms. Some suggestions we today have been sculptures, artworks, lighting, plantings, garden beds, maybe even an annual acquisitive sculpture prize. We shouldn't limit ourselves to what, to simply mowing or cleaning up the rubbish. The options really are numerous. However, the one essential ingredient is the will of the state government to work with Clarence City Council to take immediate and constructive action to address this deficiency. If we're truly serious about staying ahead of the pack and retaining pole position as Australia's premier tourist attraction, then we must step it up a notch and ensure the gateway for many visitors to our state represents the very best that Tasmania has to offer.
Thank you. Seconder? Other speakers? Alderman Youngke. Alderman Youngke.
Well, in the police support, Alderman Blomley's motion, and I mean, I'd like to take it further and then look at all the areas around the, the Clarence area that need a little bit of tidying up. Some are obviously are the, you know, state government responsibility, but I think as a, as a council, we can do a lot better with some of the entrances into certain areas, like, you know, coming into Lorda, the separate thing to announce, coming into the surf peninsula, whatever you want to call it, or, you know, other parts in the Colbrav Valley. I know there are some signs there, but also that, you know, the beautification and some garden beds and that sort of thing makes a huge difference to how people treat their community and their physical things within the community and things like, things like graffiti and those sort of things will be reduced. Right, I think it'd be a great thing. And this would be a great mechanism to maybe look at how we can start that process and after through the budget processes as a group, we can consider that as something that we'd like to see, you know, picked up on across the city.
Thank you. Other speakers?
Yeah, look, I think any possibility of improving the gateway to the city, and that is from, obviously from the airport to the city, is a great thing. But we got a really bad deal from the city deal, there's no doubt about that. We basically got nothing out of that, whereas the other three councils came out in flying colours and got their, more than their share of the, of the pool of money, which the federal government has actually provided or has estimated to be distributed amongst those three larger councils, Kingborough, Clarence, uh, Kingborough, Hobart, and Glanorrack. But look, the basis of this whole thing is, in fact, we've got a federal election coming up shortly, we have a coalition in government, we have a state liberal government there and liaising very closely with the federal government. Why don't we, or why haven't we got a wish list to actually put to this, to the lid? And then alternatively, hopefully, they would then consider a major project for Clarence. This wishy-washy sort of thing, and I say that with the greatest of intention, of beautifying a stretch of road when there are other major projects that this council over the last fifteen, twenty years, and I've been one of the advocates for that, Mr. Mayor, we don't have proper or up-to-standard roads, in particular the South Arm Highway from the Police Academy to Lordordale, that's atrocious and that hasn't been identified, as I would have thought, in a wish list to the state government and to the federal government, particularly with the oncoming election. Also, there is also that possibility of the Flagstaff Gully Link Road, not down Johnston Creek Road, but beyond, in fact, perhaps on to the Sugarloaf Road. Now, it's going to take millions of dollars, millions of dollars, and there's always been a debate, and this council in nineteen eighty-six, when we had debate at the time, and I supported it in eighty-six, that we should have an extension of Flagstaff Gully Link Road. Now, that is a big ticket item and that may not obviously fall into the category in relation to this. I like the idea that we should beautify Clarence, but look, we've got bigger fish to fry, Alderman Blomley, and at this point in time, I think we need to be able to use our resources, our sort of lobbying capacity, to approach the state government and try to, through this process, have a, a greater sort of share of the, of the funds to upgrade the road network within the city. I will not support this because I believe we should be putting our efforts into bigger projects where there is a greater potential for the citizens of Clarence and also the gateway of, of, of Hobart to be able to gain from a major project and not necessarily from a beautification of a, of a roadway.
Thank you. Other speakers?
Yeah, who could, who could not support something to say to make the world more beautiful? And, and therefore I will be. But just a few comments on the way through. There were some remarks made about the current status of the road from the airport to, or the Tasman Bridge. Now, I don't think, personally, I mean, beauty is in the eye of the beholder and, and I don't quite think it's that bad. And as many of you know, I've actually walked that stretch of road a fair few times, including down the Medium Strip. And sure, there could be some improvements, but by and large, it's native vegetation, it's, it's reasonably well-maintained with mowing and things. And, and if by beautification we mean, the example given, that the Hobart City Council has demonstrated just how well this can be done with the well-maintained garden beds in the centre of the Tasman Highway from the Bridge of Remembrance through to the Senator. That's a very small section of highway and it's a pretty intensive planting. And I would, I would think that, and, and there's where the Hobart City Council is actually doing it. If we're talking about doing that all the way from the Tasman Highway, from the Hobart Airport to the Tasman Bridge, I'm sure the state government would be more than willing to say, sure, go for it, you know, use Hobart as your example. But I can't see that, that, you know, they would take that kind of cost shifting on board. And they may have a different view, of course, as to whether the, as to what thing can be done. But I commend Alderman Blomley, this is a good attempt for once to shift the costs the other way. Let's see if they take the bait.
Warren.
Um, yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I see no harm in asking the state government to pursue this project and pay all the costs if it was a question of Clarence Council picking up the costs, and I think we'd need to have a much deeper discussion. So I'm swayed by some of the arguments from Alderman James, that certainly we, if we're going to ask the state government for something, again, we should be looking at priorities. But I see no harm in this motion.
Yeah, I wasn't going to speak on this because I, I do support the motion, but it does say the state government responsible for ongoing regular maintenance of, of the program and all associated costs. But it does frustrate me somewhere along the line near Rose Bay High School, which is government, state government owned. There was a woman taking a pram on the road because the footpath is completely blocked off now. We know there's two footpaths, there's one high up and there's one footpath on the roadway. Now, if the government can't even look after that small section, I asked, I actually came here and asked Mr. Graham, can we do something about it? Because I don't want to see people work, walking on roadways where they shouldn't be. But if the government can't do that, I just hope they can fork out some money to do some of the things Alderman Blomley wants because I agree, there's a lot of areas here that could certainly, you know, be beautified and really look good. And when people are using this road to come into Hobart, to go out of Hobart, you know, I just think it does need some work. It may take years, the government are going to come up with the old chestnut, we haven't got any money to do it, I know that, but it may take years, but I think the motion's a positive one going forward.
Thanks, Alderman Pearce. Other speakers?
Uh, no surprises, I'm supporting this motion as well. It is in some way similar to one that I did table back in, at the end of twenty sixteen, that council liaised with the Department of State Growth to investigate options to improve and maintain the appearance of the highway corridor between Hobart Airport and the Tasman Bridge. Now, the end result of that was, we went through a workshop process, we did have some discussions, and the frequency of the verge cutting etc was increased. So that, that was a win, and so I'm hoping that this one, again, amping it up some more can also deliver a win. Uh, been some interesting debates in, in relation to things such as the airport. I'd note that there are possibly some Alderman around the table, Mr. Mayor, that are quite happy to succeed the Hobart Airport and Cambridge precinct to another neighbouring council, which is a surprise. Um, also the Flagstaff Gully Link Road came up. Now, let's just reflect on that for a moment because what was that motion of twenty twelve? What was that radical motion? We weren't going to build it, we weren't going to demand someone else build it, we were merely going to say, it's a prudent thing to put a road reservation there, should the case and the circumstances come into place. That was all, but that was beyond, sadly beyond this council at the time. Anyway, as far as the East Irwin Highway goes, which is separate from the Tasman Bridge, I do bring it up because in perhaps its most beautified or improving aesthetic end, it is the section from Old Beach through Gagebrook. And that is because the Brighton Council have taken that on and they're obviously getting some support from the state government to do it, but that matters to them a lot. So they are mining it at a frequency that's been tree plantings and this will be part of the discussions I expect we have. So, yeah, I support the motion and encourage others to do so as well.
Thank you. Alderman Blomley.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Really, not much more to add except to thank colleagues for their contributions. And as mentioned at briefing on Friday, this, this, this motion came from a recent survey of two and a half thousand residents who identified this as a real issue, not only the Tasman Highway, but the other roadways and the other infrastructure needs as mentioned around the chamber today. But all I'd say, and I have absolutely no argument whatsoever and agree totally with, with the other priorities mentioned here this evening, there are some significant infrastructure challenges facing this council. And I thank Alderman James for highlighting a few of those and other Alderman here today as well. But I'd just make this point, Mr. Mayor. I pose this question, how do you eat an elephant? One bite at a time. And this is what this motion is, it is to start the ball rolling. And yeah, every day I travel the East Irwin Highway, I like Alderman Walker does and many others here, and Alderman Warren, and Alderman James, and everyone else who lives in Lindisfarne, and Alderman Pearce, that you're in Rose Bay these days. But, yeah, and that, that needs, that needs attention as well. We all know that. But all I'd say, and in, in conclusion submit, that this is, this is a step in the right direction and I urge colleagues to support my motion this evening.
So the motion is presented by Alderman Blomley, all those in favour? Against? Carried. Item nine point three, notice of motion, Alderman Edmonds.
Mr. Mayor, I move the motion standing in my name.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Thank you, Alderman Warren. Alderman Edmonds.
I'll keep my comments brief. Single-use plastics are a massive issue for waste management and our environment. In seeking to ban single-use plastics, our friends in Hobart use a pretty blunt instrument. I'm keen for a more thorough conversation in Clarence. I've been speaking to business operators and the support for a phase-out is definitely there and many of them have taken steps forward, but they are telling me, and I'm sure some of you, that it's more complicated than just clicking your fingers and changing these things overnight. I think we've got to be really cognizant of those challenges and work on education as well as solutions for those businesses. And whether that's as a council or by working with the state government is to be determined. I think what's been missed in here as well is we need to reach out to representatives of small business, disability advocates particularly, and other key stakeholders. I'll sum up. The hard work needs to be done before going to a strict yes or no vote on a phase-out. We need to be leading, but we also need to be listening. The motion is deliberately open-ended, there are numerous options for Clarence once we've taken on board that feedback, which could be a substantive motion to phase out single-use plastics, using the survey to lobby for changes and/or a phase-out through, say, Elgat or the state government, other measures that we might bring in to reduce waste or obviously the status quo. It's important for the council to work hard to have the local community and the business community on board, no matter what direction we head in. I look forward to hearing the views of others and an opportunity to sum up later. So for now, I seek counsel.
Mayor, and I thank Alderman Edmonds for moving this motion, obviously following on from the success of the Hobart City Council moving a similar motion. We discussed this in our workshop on Friday and, oh, sorry, our meeting briefing, and I know some concerns are raised around the table about making sure that we consult with stakeholders. So I just wanted to reassure people that Hobart City Council had face-to-face meetings with a hundred and thirty-two business owners. They've done the hard work, they've done a survey. A lot of the things that we're concerned about have already been done in Hobart. I have the motion here that was tabled and I also have frequently asked questions. So if anybody would like to, to learn more about how Hobart went about this in a considered and measured way and consultative way, we have that information available. But to speak to the motion, the motion is, let's ask the community what they think. I'm fully in favour of that and I support this motion.
Thank you. Other speakers? Alderman Molder.
Thank you. I mean, who could, who could not be in favour of getting rid of plastic bags, but, or plastic, single-use plastic? But I think we've got to have a little bit of a look here. We've got to have a look at the holistic approach to this. Sure, there's impact on some businesses and others and, and we can all say, yes, well, if some can do it, then all can do it. The fact is, is that large chains are in a much better position than a small corner store to do these sorts of things. But I, I just say, similar thing was done with, with shopping bags. You know, you could no longer, that we passed a law, and I was in power at the time, that you couldn't give away a less than thirty-five millimetre, thirty-five micron plastic bag at a shopping counter because these things, you know, would just blow in the environment and go everywhere else. What was the response? They then charged you fifteen cents for a much thicker plastic bag that ends up in the same place as the thin ones used to and probably poses a bigger hazard in certain areas. So, but I mean, you know, it's a laudable motion and, and if, and if we went statewide with it, I could probably say, yep, you can bear it. But how are you going to sort of say, well, Hobart's doing it and maybe Clarence would do it, but Kingborough or Glanorrack decide they don't want to do it because, you know, their local community consultation says no, someone else says yes. So, you know, I, I think it's a good thing, but it needs to be considered in a much broader context. And I think this is a classic case, like with plastic bags, that we do, do a statewide thing. Now, the thing is that I think if you're going to go down the thing of banning them, then you need to ban them. And that's where the thing with the plastic shopping bags went astray. Because you can get twenty micron, twenty very, very thin plastic bags when you go to the fruit and veggie counter and you put all your fruit and apples in them, then you go to the counter and if you want to put the plastic bags into another plastic bag, suddenly you get charged fifteen cents for a big thick one. And, and the end result is impact virtually nothing. So I, I really think that here's an opportunity, we can go do it, we could do a statewide thing and we could perhaps not fall for these little tweaks about, oh, this is acceptable, that's not, and, and those sorts of things. So it's a case of you either ban it or you don't. And I think that the community survey will be interesting. No doubt they'll be supporting the ban of single-use plastics, but then it comes down to some of us who are in places like this to come up with a policy that is actually workable and achievable and actually does do something about this excessive plastic waste.
My thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, I think this is a sensible and a measured, measured approach to this issue. And I'm looking forward very much to the workshop when we actually look at the survey and the survey questions that we put to, uh, put, put to our residents. Mr. Mayor, in April two thousand and three, I was in Coles Bay, when that town became the first town in the world to ban plastic bags. The then local baker, around Ben Carney, led that charge through community and business. Now, sure, Coles Bay in non-peak season has a population of three hundred and fifty-three people, to some would argue, it's, wasn't particularly hard to get the majority of residents on, on board. But of course, as we know, during peak season, that population swells when people go and enjoy Wineglass Bay, the Fraser Lake Peninsula, etc. But what that did was not only put Coles Bay on the map and, and add very positively to Tasmania's clean, green image, but it demonstrated to many the importance of, of fair income community consultation. And that's what this is. It's what the blunt instrument that Hobart City Council deployed, because that just smacks a virtue signal. This is about getting a result that is good for the community and good for the environment. And we have to take the community along. This is an educated process. There are impacts for small business people. There are impacts for the environment too. And that's our job to weigh that up and to address these concerns in a measured and sensible approach. And I congratulate the mover of this motion for adopting such an approach.
Thank you. Alderman Pearce next and Alderman James.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Look, one thing I, I like this motion, but one thing I, I hope that's put into it, Alderman Edmonds, is I do like the way that Hobart have passed a motion to ban single-use plastics by two thousand and twenty-one. And I hope that goes in our questionnaire that we're not going to do it tomorrow, we're not going to scare every small business owner in this state because as a small business worker, I understand that a lot of businesses, especially like restaurants and takeaways, have a year's supply of things and, you know, just to be on the safe side. So it's going to take a while to use all that. So I don't want people saying, you know, don't do it, don't do it, because I've got so much stock on hand. I want them to say that, you know, in two thousand and twenty-two, we're, we're going to do it if, if that's what the, the survey says. Because I think you've got to just be fair to everybody. I totally agree with banning single-use plastics, especially in Clarence where we've got over a hundred and sixty kilometers of coast guard. And we, we see what damage this does to marine animals there. So I really think this is a, a good motion, it's a, a start. But I honestly think a bit like Alderman Molder, I think the state government will probably come in on this and at some stage make it statewide.
Yeah, look, thank you. The motion is worded very well, I think, because it's. The motion is worded very well, I think, because it's posing a question, seeking the views of Clarence residents and businesses on the phasing out. So look, I don't necessarily agree with Alderman Warren when she says that we have a template or a basis on which to gauge this, given that Hobart has done what they have done and passed their motion in that respect. The demographics of Clarence and the Hobart City Council in Kingborough, even though I don't necessarily agree that there is a difference, it does come into it because Hobart has a number of issues there, which in fact would make it possible for a motion such as what's just got up recently at that meeting, to get through because of the, probably the capacity and makeup of the actual Hobart City Council. But nevertheless, there's a couple of other matters I want to raise, and that is with respect to the small business sector within the city of Clarence. I've been a business operator for 30 years, and I know there are costs of production. You know, they have to make ends meet, they have to obviously write into their operating statement their expenses, and obviously, one of these items is one of the most expensive parts of their operation. So look, by sending out a questionnaire to the residents of Clarence, and I hope it businesses, and I hope Business East is including that, because that's been a wonderful organisation for Clarence over the years. It has been the sort of mediator between Clarence Council and the business sector. And we all know the benefits that Clarence receives in relation to Business East. And I hope that during the course of the debate, and even when the survey is being, you know, obviously worked through, that Business East will be one of the businesses that could be identified as one of the key recipients, hopefully, of their views in relation to this. So in final, I just would like to say that we haven't had a great success rate over the years in relation to surveys. We've had a survey on the South Arm Highway, we've had a survey on Uncle Tom Copley and all, to be honest. And in actual fact, there is this sort of 10%, 15%, even. At some times, we do get 20%, I think, with the access to Lord of the Beach. We did get a very high response rate to reopen that, and quite rightfully so, because we made an absolute blunder in relation to that. So anyway, in relation to surveys, in relation to surveys, I think this is a good motion. It will, it's only seeking the views of Clarence residents, and there is a number of issues involved in here, so one extra won't hurt, and I'm sure the response will be very good. And I support the motion.
Alderman James. I think Alderman Newt, and then Alderman Kennedy.
Mr Mayor, I just wanted to commend Alderman Edmonds on this motion, because what he's actually asking us to do is to consult.
The one thing that I find strange about the whole debate about plastics, and look, I support the move towards reducing waste products and pollution, but why is it that we only tackle the obvious, easy stuff and don't look at the bigger picture, which is going to a local supermarket and buy products in there? You know what I mean? And that's really what makes this something that should be done at a national level, and should be done in a coordinated approach. Because all we're really doing is just making out that we've done something that's going to solve a problem, that it really doesn't do that. And the other issue is, we talk about the global basis. Anyone who's been to Bali or to Asia, or a lot of undeveloped countries knows that that's where a lot of the plastics in the ocean comes from. But look, you know, certainly the consequences of going down this path and the unintended consequences that Alderman Mulder talked about, I mean, sometimes the things that we do, like, you know, the rules around hygiene of selling food and things, they actually create the waste that we've got to do. So I mean, they're the sort of issues that we should be looking at as a council as well, whether we're actually contributing to the problem by the rules that we put in place. You know, maybe from a state government level, you know, I mean, the old, everything's got to be wrapped up and covered, and, you know, plastic around, you know, what do you call it, painkillers, you know, all this sort of stuff is actually adding to the problem. So I did certainly support reducing waste, but I mean, if we're fair income, we'd actually be looking at the bigger picture and trying to find ways to actually reduce packaging across the board, not just take the easy option, which is to get the penalised appeal by selling spoons or straws, or, you know, like I said, doing the easy option. So I think that's really, and the cost to us to go down that path should be part of the survey and the whole debate that we look at. So certainly in support, but it's a bigger issue than straws and spoons, as far as I'm concerned.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. When we go into spaces, we have to be mindful of something that local government often suffers from, which is the concept of unfunded mandates. That's when the state government comes up with a great idea, signs it off, kicks it down to local government without funding to make it happen. And in this space, we need to be cognizant of, you know, what may well have happened in Hobart, an unfunded mandate of, we're awesome, plastics banned, now you guys go and ban it. Alderman Mulder also noted, and was repeated again by Alderman Newt, about the matter of unintended consequences. And these are important issues, and that's what's so good about this motion, because it's an information gathering exercise. And the end result may not be a ban, but it would certainly likely to be leading to reduction strategies. And I think that's important. It may well be that that's the end result. It's also important tonight that this survey, which is coming a little bit, you know, bigger than Eurovision, it's not a vox pop. It's not going to be a case that we look at the numbers and say, 51.013% of people said this, so we're going to do that. It's a gathering of information to work out a strategy and move forward. And when it comes to environmental footprint, shouldn't all be on the likes of small retailers? And I don't think that's the intention of the motion. If you want to look at, you know, sectors, I'm in the health sector, I buy gloves by the thousands. That's just for myself for the year. So, and one of the things with that is that in health, we talk about infection control, that matters. But in some ways, it's also a get-out of actually thinking and working a bit harder about what you can do to reduce yourself in that sector. So it's the health sector, it's a pretty big sector, and I'm sure if we were to look at each and every sector, there's big gains we can be doing to make a difference. So I will be supporting the motion, and I encourage everyone else to do likewise.
Alderman Edmonds, write a reply.
Yeah, Mr Mayor. I definitely take the comments on board from everyone tonight. I think the concerns that have been raised exactly why you have to do the hard yards isn't as simple as just waving the survey underneath people's noses, like we have to workshop it, and we have to seek those views and find out what the challenges are, as I said in my speech. I think some have picked up on the intent about why the motion is open-ended, but I will just repeat it, that there are numerous options for Clarence once we've taken on board that feedback, including a substantive motion to phase out single-use plastics, which in fact, someone could move at the next meeting if they want, and will have to vote on it. So this motion is actually about getting ahead of an issue like that, because I think if someone says to me, yes, no, do you want to ban single-use plastics, I find it hard to be on the wrong side of that argument going forward. This is about making sure we get the right answer for our community. And that doesn't necessarily mean that we do it as a motion in this council. We might go over the road to Parliament House and say, this is what we've heard, here are the challenges, we've done some of the work for you, Hobart's got ahead of the game in terms of this, but they've made the mistakes, as we referred to, I think, in the waste discussion. Let's learn from that. But I don't think we need to rush, and I take Alderman Pearce's comment on board, that there has to be lead-in time for this sort of thing, and what Alderman Mulder said about, you know, some of the concerns about rushing these things. The fact is, this is an issue right now. I think this is a position that we can be proud of, taking for that we are listening to people, and we're not locking ourselves into a motion the day that the survey results are revealed. In fact, we're just giving ourselves a position of strength if we do want to go down the state government path, or potentially even go with them to a national level. Those are all the notes I had. I really seek everyone's support, and I think this is the way we can go forward with consensus and work together to get a result for our community that gets the best for them.
Thank you. So the motion before the chair is as presented by Alderman Edmonds. All those in favour? Carry unanimously. Alderman Walker.
Mr Mayor, I rise to move a motion that council sees no demonstrable benefit provided to Clarence by the Southern Tasmanian Council Authority. Accordingly, council will notify all STCA member councils of its intention not to renew its membership in the 1920 financial year and seek their views on winding up the authority.
Have a second, please. Alderman Blomley, thank you.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Now, again, I've been doing a lot of memory lane tonight, but again, a notice of motion I moved in June 28 was diluted in this aspect. It was to hold a workshop to discuss the future involvement of Clarence in the Southern Tasmanian Council Authority and consideration of withdrawal. Now, when that motion went onto our agenda, other councils looked at it and picked it up. They included Kingborough, Lenorkie, and Brighton. The mayor there had a lot to say about this space. What that largely ended up with was us basically, effectively, giving them a show cause notice to say, we're not satisfied with what we're getting. And this was in June, you know, basically, we were in for another full year of subs. It was a nine-month lead-in time to get their act together, because March is the cutoff or the deadline month to pull out risk-free for the next financial year. Now, in November, with post-council elections, these matters were raised again with STCA. My understanding by some new members around the table. We move now to February, it's the last month. A meeting was held noting that there needed to be some serious sort of changes and thoughts around STCA, and nothing came of it, other than calling another meeting for today. And I described that meeting today as an existential crisis meeting, a meeting to determine what was their meaning. And how did they go with that? Well, unfortunately, despite undertakings given that we would be provided with what happened at that meeting well before this motion was discussed tonight, the mayor admitted to circulate to us the circular from this meeting. And I can understand why he did, because it's hopeless. And I'll read you our part of this secret circular. A mayor's workshop will be convened in mid-May 2019 to discuss ongoing regional collaboration, the role of the STCA after June 2020, and that this be supported by a communications strategy. Councils are to provide key priorities for regional collaboration for discussion at the workshop by the secretariat by mid-April. That is the best the STCA could come up with, nine months after an effective show cause notice by multiple members. And what else have they done in that time? Well, they've said, we kind of will be recommending that we don't take any more subs from you because we've got a pool of money that we can use for another year. Look, it's hard to count all of the STCA shortcomings. Their ability to lobby at federal and state level is obviously front and centre. The fiasco of changing their name in a bid for relevancy to think south, and then having to change it back because it became less relevant. Yeah, well, but to me, the cruelest failing has been around the land use strategy, be it urban growth boundary or the Southern Tasmanian Regional Land Use Strategy, the fingerprints of the STCA lowest common denominator approach was everywhere, with every council getting something. And what has been the effect of that? A record $21,000 grant for first home builders has been put in by the state government, but land is so expensive that building one is out of the reach of many under-40s who grew up in Clarence in a house that their parents had built. The planning challenges of urban and regional councils vary markedly, and you can't get a consensus position when there are these different needs and priorities. Now, you're going to hear multiple arguments through the debate defending the indefensible, largely through distortion of harsh realities. Yes, we're told that the STCA is an important voice in waste management. Well, I'm not sure how effective it is, and I don't know that that sounds like a better idea, because I think it would be better done statewide, as with climate change policy, as indeed with the garage trail sale promotions, which seem to be its reason for existence. Those things should be done by Elgat, I think, much more effectively. Now, three months should be plenty of time for an orderly wind-up, and not many people get a three-month warning of being fired. Today, my kids' school had a belated St Patrick's Day parade. My son dressed as a leprechaun, a mythical fairy, with a pot of gold, if you can catch one. It's not a bad analogy for the argument that will be put to you soon, that we stay in STCA because there is an anticipated $136,000 pot of gold in funds if it gets wound up later. Well, first of all, at the bottom line of the secret circular, it points out it won't be that much, because they're already talking about taking some of that out for a garage sale trial. And, you know, really, you know, if we left with $120,000, it's not going to be that much, that's $10,000 each. Maybe it would endure for another year and get its act together, but I doubt it. The best predictor to the future of something is seeing what happened in the past. And whilst the STCA may evolve into an outfit representing regional southern councils, with clarity if we were to leave it as a metropolitan, in that case, I'd be happy to see that $10,000 that might have come to us be given. But it's important to point out that although each council has one vote, one value in decisions around this entity, the bigger councils are paying in $3 for every $1 of the other councils. I could go on.
I've got about another 20 seconds. Alderman Blomley.
Thank you, thank you, Mr Mayor. And Mr Mayor, like all other elected members, and I'm sure some of the gaveling tonight, I look forward to your anticipated report of today's STCA meeting. There's not much, if anything, I disagree with from the move of this motion. This organisation has been on notice now for quite some time. And every time a decision in this chamber comes before me, the rule I run over any situation is where is the benefit, or what value does this hold for Clarence residents and road pass? There's been, undeniably, a lack of effective output by this organisation. There is, in my view, absolutely no compelling reason to belong. Twelve councils are members of this, eight of those are rural, and all smaller councils, and they hold the weight around the table. Sure, there's the Greater Hobart Act, and we are going to come into active conflict with those satellite councils as they vie to increase investment and infrastructure spend in their municipalities. And I just refer to the Brighton Community News, where Brighton Council is trumpeting their recent strategic planning workshop held just last month, where they're looking and believe very strategic in their approach over the next 10 years to expand the size of their city. In effect, residents and road passers of Clarence, through past contributions, are subsidising other councils. That's not our job. My remit is pretty clear. My remit is to represent the interests of residents and road passers at Clarence. Now, there may have been an agreement for no subs to go forward, there might be a pot of $137,000, as I understand, but I'm also told the decision made today for the, get this, the garage sale trial, I mean, goodness me, coming at a cost of $17,000. So already we're down to 120. So I would just admit, Mr Mayor, that in my view, it won't take too much time to burn through the remaining 120 with these kind of decisions. There is no identifiable need for us to remain a member of this, and I look forward to your report this evening, Mr Mayor, because I am far from convinced that this remaining a part of this organisation is a good thing for this council to be involved in.
Thanks, Alderman Blomley. And I guess, as your representative on STCA, I'll take my chair hat off and put my Alderman hat on and enter into this debate. Thank you very much. Look, I don't take issue, STCA has really struggled to find its place and contribute a lot over the last few years, there's no doubt about that. I think it has done. It does have two projects currently underway, that it's got the Waste Strategy Committee, which is the only regional waste strategy. There's one in the north-west and one in the north as well. And it conducts an education programme regarding to landfill, it does sponsor the garage sale trail, and it's got a very active programme in regard to waste strategy in the south. The other regional climate change initiative is also an ongoing project that's been funded by state and federal money, which is now being managed on a regional basis. The thing is that while there have been very modest benefits directly to this council and this municipality, the body is the only, the only regional body that actually represents and cares about Southern Tasmania as a whole as an entity. The federal government, the state government, both look for regional bodies to prioritize. The federal government, the state government, both look for regional bodies to prioritise their projects. Another thing that came out of today's, and thank you, Alderman Walker, for bringing to, I was going to cover some of those points you made, but you've covered it nicely. The other thing that they brought out today was the intention to look ahead. Now, when you think about the directors around that table, we've got seven new mayors out of the twelve, who are fresh around the table. They've got new perspectives, new ideas on how they want to go forward with the STCA and what it can offer. Some of them need it a lot more than others. Clarence certainly, with the prospect of the Greater Hobart Council and the Greater Hobart Act, is now in a position to work with the other three metro councils and deal with things on a regional basis. We've also got SURA to the east with the three south-eastern councils. But there are other councils around the place that really look forward to this regional cooperation and experience. And we, as a senior partner in that southern council list, I think we have a responsibility, and I actually feel that some of our residents, if not most, feel some sort of corporate responsibility and social conscience towards the Greater Hobart area and the region as a whole. I think you've covered the other things. I'll just clarify one point there. Should the authority be wound up, the basis for distributing the remaining assets and accounts is basically based on what we've contributed over the last three years. And we'd be looking at about twenty-seven thousand dollars as opposed to just ten thousand dollars. Now, that's small bickies, I know, in terms of the overall scheme of things, but that's what the distribution to Clarence would be if there was a wind-up. So I would strongly encourage you, it's not going to cost us a brass razzu to stay in for another twelve months. It gives us the opportunity, particularly with so many new faces around the table, to actually, yeah, think about the future. They are passionate about regional cooperation. Let's give them a chance to see what they can come up with and move forward to this regional body that is so important to so many people. Thank you. Alderman Jameson and Alderman Warren.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. The first line of Alderman Walker's motion is that council sees no demonstrable benefit provided to Clarence. Look, that's already put the negative into this particular argument, because over the years, this particular committee has worked extremely well. It was mentioned about the garage sale and also the establishment of the Waste Strategy Committee. Well, that was something that came out of the Southern Waste, Southern Waste Strategy Committee. When, yeah, authority, a few years ago, as deputy chair, we encouraged, and there was a number of projects which worked extremely well. And therefore, the inheriting factor here in relation to STCA taking on board the garage sale is a very positive one, and it's going to prove all sorts of benefits in relation to those members of STCA. The other matter that needs to be considered here is that if Clarence withdraws, will the others withdraw? Will they decide to fold the organisation? I don't believe they will. And it would take a majority of members to do that, because that's what happens with SWAZA. And that was decided because of a number of factors that it should wind up. But I can see, and I know of the many benefits that the other members of the STCA have in relation to this. And they can see as a body, as a group, working together in Southern Tasmania, they have more clout to actually go ahead and create a lot of interest amongst those member councils, and therefore can obviously achieve a lot more for them. So if we're talking about folding, okay, let's just see whether or not the other members of STCA are going to pull out as well. I don't believe they will. I think that they can see the benefits of working together across council boundaries to achieve a lot. And as it was mentioned earlier, it's a new ballgame with these new mayors and the complement that exist in relation to this. So they ought to be given a chance. They ought to be given a chance to be able to establish the bona fides of working together and also to being able to create and work towards some projects which will assist all those councils that are part and parcel of SWAZA. If Clarence decides to pull out, okay, well, it's got the safety net of the Hobart Metropolitan Area and also to the Hobart Act to become part of. And so, look, it would be no loss, I suppose, in that respect. But as one of the key players in the southern region, Clarence has a lot to offer in relation to what it can do and achieve in relation to other members. And we have a common, we have common boundaries with Sorrel and Brighton, for heaven's sake. And we're always trying to work with, I believe, Sorrel and Brighton, even though there has been a lot of debate over the years in relation to Brighton, how it achieves its low rate ASO rates, rating, issues, et cetera, et cetera, and how Sorrel is sort of, is up there in the, in the, in the numbers to be able to bring about some cohesion in relation to Tasman and Sorrel areas. I think it's a mistake to actually wind this up or withdraw from it. And I think it's a big ask to actually say that the STCA members of that regional group will pull the pin. And it's better for us to be part of the process rather than withdraw from it. I do not support the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Look, like Alderman Blomley and unsure all the other Aldermen at the table, I make decisions on what I see as the best interests of the Clarence residents. And I do not necessarily believe that's served by pulling out of this and going alone. I think there's greater strength in numbers. We can achieve more as a group than we can individually. We won't be reinventing the wheel. I believe it is an opportunity with new thoughts, new ideas, to explore that at no cost. So when you might say there's no benefit to residences, to Clarencees, also no cost. So that we have nothing to lose except a small amount of time, which we would be spending talking to other councils anyway. I frequently go interstate to national meetings where it's Tasmania versus the larger states. And it's very disheartening to be continually rolled by New South Wales and Victoria. I really appreciate the position of councils like Kewan Valley and Brighton and Sorrel that don't necessarily have the resources to set up their own waste strategy, for example. And so, at this point in time, I will not be supporting this motion.
Order. Thank you. Yes, it's one of those things, and when you have a look at the history, some good things have been achieved for others. I don't necessarily agree with the idea that when I look at something, I've got to look at, you know, could you vote in the Clarence election? I really think that they've come for time, and, you know, and if you've been in parliaments and things like that, you will see that your primary objective is to the people of Tasmania. And there may be particular slants that, you know, that affect your electorate. But it would be a mishmash of a parliament if we all sit there and we only voted according to what was in the interests of our specific electorate, irregardless of whether the greater good. So then you've got to work out, as well, you know, the regional cooperation issues. Are there not enough talkfests in quangos and quagos to be talking in now? Are there not enough provisions? There is the Greater Hobart Bill, which will form the Greater Hobart Committee, which, for the first time, will take control of issues like the land use that Alderman Walker refers to, that have been bedevilling councils for a long time. So now, eventually, the state government steps in, and much to my chagrin, not only bangs the heads together, but now takes control of the ruler and starts controlling what's going on in those things. So, you know, in the end, we need to do it. In the end, we need to get the councils working as a region. And that is not through the STCA, with its imbalance of voting power, with its imbalance of contributions. And it really does need to be. This is a case where if we can't get mergers, and most of these councils will sit around the table and say, no, we demand our independence. No, we demand that, you know, that we have the local say. And a few of them with exception are now struggling, battling with the idea that without state government handouts, and they're getting fewer and fewer, without a sufficiently large rate base, that they are going to struggle to provide their own services. And the last thing we should be doing is throwing a lifeline out to councils who should have merged years ago and formed sizable councils that can manage it. And everyone says, oh, no, you know, we'll be forgotten. We'll be left out in the outside. I give you the example of when we took over the Richmond Council. Year in, year out, that council, that area, that village, that town has received more per capita than it ever got before, and more per capita than most other areas inside Clarence, with probably the exception of O one five. So I don't support us going any further. I support us pulling the rug on this now. And it is such a spurious argument to say, oh, no, if we pull out now, we won't be part of the divvying up. You know, like, we won't be invited to the reading of the wheel, you know, for what it's worth, you know? What a load of rubbish. If these councils want to continue, there will be no dividing up of the wheel. They will continue as the outer urban Greater Hobart Committee, if you like. So, you know, the fate is in their hands. And for the sake of us continuing to go down this path, and sure, twelve months, you know, if you haven't found a project other than a garage trail to be worth pursuing in the next twelve months, you know, like, aren't there any problems out there of regional cooperative nature that we need to be tackling? Aren't there? Well, if they are, we would have thought of them by now. It's seen as used by date. It's just another quango. And in my experience, I've never seen a quango that wound up with any assets left in it. They always seem to spend them just the last minute.
I would reply.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Look, the STCA, as I've noted, has had multiple chances to change with the nine-month window we gave them with that discussions in June. The big carrot seems to be getting dangled is that there are no subs this year. Well, that is because the STCA has some leftover reserves because it's manifestly failed to deliver on projects it said it would undertake. The waste strategy and the garage sale trial and regional climate change, well, they are best done at a statewide basis, which means probably sitting within Elgat. I would put it to you that they've been singularly unsuccessful when it comes to lobbying, certainly with clarity. Again, you talked about new mayors, fresh blood on the STCA. They've had five months, five months to come to the meeting today that you attended and to bring some vim vigour and get some things happening. And that hasn't, that hasn't happened. And, you know, it's pretty clear from the circular that that's true. I want to make a really other important point, because it's talked about this isn't going to cost us anymore. Well, let me tell you, there is a proposed, on this circular, there's a proposed STCA meeting in May. And that's actually quite a stroke of genius by the inertia club. Because if council rejects my motion, we've lost the opportunity to depart from this entity liability-free because the three-month deadline is at the end of this month. And at that meeting in May, again, the secret circular puts out that they're recommending no further contributions. Not that they're guaranteeing there won't be any further contributions. So what can happen at the meeting in May? They can hit everybody up for whatever big projects they desire, and it'll be up to the remaining councils that are in there to be coughing up, and we'll be coughing up three to one. And I also understand this, that, you know, Lenorkie will consider the matter on the twenty-fifth of March and almost certainly leave. And there's also a motion of notice from Kingborough to do likewise on their next agenda. Alderman James asks if that's really the case. Well, I put it to you, we're here tonight that the deputy mayor of Lenorkie is in the chamber. He is more than free to nod his head if he believes that the STCA is worth saving. He's more than free to do this. Oh, well, he's still free to do it.
Let's stick to the summing up, please.
But if I haven't sold you on the reasons to go now, then for no other reason than risk mitigation, you should support my motion. Because if at the May meeting, there is a miracle of reformation and they come up with the most cogent of ideas, we can simply go with our tail between our legs and say, we've realised the areas of our way and we wish to be back. We can do that. That is the risk-free approach. But with the other councils leaving and us being one of the three-to-one contributors, the riskiest thing you can do in this space is not support my motion to leave.
Thank you. So the motion before the chair is as presented by Alderman Walker, that we wind up our association with STCA. All those in favour? Against? The motion is carried. Thank you. Moving on to reports from outside bodies. Initially, Single Tasmanian, Southern Tasmanian Council's authority, I'd like to table the December quarterly report and the confirmed minutes for the meeting of the eighteenth of February. No, 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 we're still reports from single and joint authorities. So the next one is the Copping Refuge Disposal Site Joint Authority. Alderman Walker. Right. We note that there is a quarterly summary of meetings and that we need to consider the quarterly report in committee. Thank you. Taswater Corporation, I can report that there's a board selection committee meeting convening on Wednesday in Campbelltown. Keep you up to date with what happens there. Are there any other reports?
Mr. Mayor, on behalf of the deputy mayor myself, I'd like to table the minutes of the Clarence Cultural History Advisory Committee of six March twenty nineteen.
Thank you. Other reports? Okay. Moving on to item eleven, reports of officers. Eleven point one, info in the weekly briefing reports, the twenty-fifth of February, fourth and the eleventh of March, we note. Thanks, Alderman Blomley. Second, Alderman Pierce. Any questions on the weekly briefing reports? Alderman James.
Yes, on the twenty-fifth of September, and in relation to, sorry, what? Twenty, sorry, the twenty-fifth of February. Twenty-fifth of February. In relation to development application on ten Yoxman's Way in Tramia. My question through you to Mr. Lovell. Mr. Lovell, the comments made by Mr. David Morris of Simmons-Wolthagen, and I quote, "I do not seek, I do not, I see no basis to seek in the order of costs. Strictly speaking, the appeal was without merit from the outset. And it may be that, it could be argued, that the council incurred unnecessary costs due to the abject failure to plead one iota of relevant appeal material," unquoted. This seems to me to be a fairly unorthodox approach from a representative of council on behalf of an appeal to the Planning Appeals tribunal. So my question is, is this sort of language that we would, could expect from future issues? If, in fact, then it's set from the outset that the appeal, obviously, was an abject failure and there wasn't one iota of relevant material?
Mr. Mayor, it's normal, normal practice with the council, when it incurs costs in an appeal, to seek costs that it has incurred. And on this occasion, we asked Mr. Morris for his advice as to whether that would be successful, and this was his response. It is unusual, but in this case, it's not often that we come up with where appeals logic against the council, where in fact there is no legitimate evidence, where in fact that justifies the explanation as to why, in accordance with the normal procedures, we concede to our costs.
It just seems as though that any appeal by any resident or person or company should be gauged on its merits. And obviously, if a person decides to take it to appeal, then they may have very good reasons for doing so, even if it means that they may withdraw in the process. My next matter that I would like to raise is in relation to the DSG decision on the East Dewan Highway. That's on the twenty-fifth of February, not September, twenty-fifth of February, and it's item number two. and it's item number two. And my question through you to Mr. Graham, his capacity as the group managing engineering services. Mr. Graham, in dot point three of the, of your circular to us, you refer to amongst other things, and I quote, "As Clinton Road connects with Sugarloaf Road, this means drivers accessing Sugarloaf would have an alternative access point to the highway controlled by traffic signals." And as part of the planned highway upgrade between Gulflicks Road and Sugarloaf, traffic signals are being considered by DSG for that area. Now, so my question is, is that a reality, or is it something that we're going to be battling with for a number of years? Because this has been on the agenda for at least, well, since that subdivision up and was contemplated. So will it be, in your experience, do you think this will become a reality, or is it something that's going to be just sort of shunted to and from because of the nature of this development at Parker's Road?
Through Mr. Mayor, we understand that DSG have taken planning and design exercise at the moment, but in terms of time and objectives, physical construction on the local council.
Other questions on the weekly briefing reports? Okay, so I put the motion, all those in favour? Against? Carried. 11.2, there's nothing to report, so moving on to planning matters. I advise the council now intends to seek as a planning authority under the Land Use Planning and Approval Act. And Alderman Kennedy. 11.3.1 is a DA 57 on Lumber Street area for two multiple dwellings. Thank you, Alderman Chong. Do we have a second, please? Thank you, Alderman Piers. Wish to speak to it?
I'll support the officer's recommendation.
Alderman Piers?
I'm ready.
Any other speakers? Most, all those in favour? Carried unanimously.
Should we get?
Sorry, did I miss somebody?
I'll get Paul Kennedy.
Sure, yeah, yeah.
She's pretty interesting.
But did I miss a vote there? Was it a unanimous vote, or?
Eleven zero.
Well, that still counts as a unanimous. Thanks. Yes, please. Item 11.3.2 is a DA at 320 Flagstaff Gully Link Road for Clarence Mike, Mountain Bike Park, actually, toilets. Alderman James?
Yes, look, great pleasure in moving the recommendation, 11.3.2.
Thank you, Alderman Kennedy.
This has been a, a long process, and in fact, it's a good one inasmuch as that the actual instruction and works off the toilet sand off, so the provision in the longer term for a car park there at the Mountain Bike Park at Mornington. I see council support.
Alderman Mulder?
Yes, then, Mr. Mayor. Council, just in, in general terms, really does need to be congratulated. This has become something that, that even on places like Whistler, the famous Canadian mountain bike park, this park gets a mention because of its facilities that are there and the, and the fact that, you know, there's a fairly free open range tree movement on the odd fire trails, which has required minimal amount of capital worth. Now, I was, was with great pleasure, I might say, that I was instrumental in, in actually having this project brought before the bicycle committees, it was in those days, Mr. Mayor, and I'm sure you probably recall that. But the, the real credit for this one actually should go, I think, to my son Jack, who was a mountain bike parker, and whose idea it was, and who together with Simon French, built that park by and large by hand labour. And, and the only claim to fame I have it is that somewhere buried up on that hill are still three of my shovels and one of my picks. But I think this is a great facility. My only concern with it, and we've just had a debate about the beautification of the highways and the thing, is that we have this almost iconic piece of world-class infrastructure, and we don't have toilets. And I really wish we would have just gone on and built some toilets. But what are we going to do? We're going to put a couple of plastic dunes out on the park, which I think sort of, even though they're temporary, I think it really does distract from it. And, and I just wish we would have gone straight ahead and, and built the proper facilities which should have been there a long time ago, because not all of us are blessed with being able to find one of the many trees in the neighbourhood when the need arises. But I, I think it's, it's a great idea, and perhaps I can suggest that on the way through, if we have to go down the path of temporary toilets before we build more permanent structures, that perhaps we could do some screening. Because as anyone who's, like, been on the waterfront, where for years and years, we had a row of plastic toilets stuck there with doors hanging off them and all sorts of things. It's just not a good look. And I think that as soon as possible, for starters, we should find some sort of appropriate screening. And secondly, we should expedite building the proper facilities that need to be there. So yes, it's great pleasure to see the next iteration of this, which is actually a world-class facility. I wasn't joking it, because when my son went to Whistler, that's exactly what they said. So they said, oh, you're from, oh, you're from Tasmania. And they said, oh, you've got a couple of good bike parks down there, haven't you, you know? And, and they mentioned the, you know, the one up north, which we all know about, and, and this one here that actually got rated, because it becomes part of a tour of these people. They go from place to place to place. So we were well up there, we've got a world-class facility, we should be thankful that we've got the Million Ranges, our backdrop, and that we have that sort of participation for reservations. So as you're building the toilets, should you find my shovels, I'd appreciate the return.
Alderman Walker?
I concur with the parts of Alderman Mulder's speech that I heard. I have no idea what the risk is, and I won't make a comment either way. Just to, again, reinforce, not only is this like a, a very high caliber facility, what makes this unique is in, in some ways the same thing as what makes the Coal River Valley so special as a wine region, its proximity to, to population. People can be having a desk job within the Rossney CBD, and they can actually go to this, this park in their lunch break hour. It's a great facility, and we're, we're doing a good thing for the wider region as well. So support the motion.
Other speakers? Right reply? Alderman James? Put the motion in, that approval subject to conditions and advice, all those in favour? Carried unanimously. 11.3.3 is a DA for 15 Acton Road with access over 17 Acton Road for additions and operations. Thank you, Alderman Chong. Motion for approval, subject to conditions and advice, all those in favour? Carried unanimously. 11.3.4, DA for 15 Bayfield Street and five Winkley Place for a drive-through takeaway shop. Thank you, Alderman Blomley. Second, Alderman Kennedy. Would you like to speak to the motion?
I move the officer's recommendation, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you. Other speakers? Put the motion for approval, subject to conditions and advice, all those in favour? Carried unanimously. 11.3.5 is a subdivision application for a number of titles on Pass Road and Goodwin's Road, Route 169 lot subdivision. Thanks, Alderman Blomley. Second up? Alderman Mulder, thank you. Would you like to speak?
At the moment, can't go past that, that, that here we are once again producing some land, land in an area that we've tried a few times before, but now at last it's taking off. My only observation really is, or two observations are, first of all, I note from the outline development plans, that there's been some proper treatment of the, of the water in the area. I only hope that we're not talking about big pipes to take the creek away, but that we're talking about some water-sensitive urban design, in other words, swales, because I noticed that there are paths and pathways and the potential, no doubt, for recreational, passive recreational facilities in the area. On the subject of water, how long have we been putting up with Pass Road in its current state? It is one of those things where, for convenience sake, we no doubt built a, a, a track for bullets to, you know, to make their way along that valley, and we are now left with a road that is basically built on top of the creek. It crosses in different points of time, the road often floods, there's subsidence, and it's a real requirement for the, you know, the residents. It is a highly-used road, and it is seriously in need. If we're going to start putting subdivisions like this on, we're going to have to take a global approach to this particular road very soon, and actually build it up to a standard to meet the amount of traffic that uses it. And this is the thing with roads, and we've, you know, and we talk about it time and time again. We all talk about, oh, you know, the speed limit needs to be reduced because the standard of the road is too poor. That is a cop-out. We, as people, as, as people representing the, who are responsible for roads, we need to make roads that are of a standard suitable to take the amount of traffic that's on them now, and that will be on them in, over the next 10 to 15 years or even more. So we need to build our infrastructure at a standard to meet present and future needs. So we should be building these standards to suit the amount of traffic that's on there. And, and I think that this particular road, and there are going to be more subdivisions and more subdivisions down this road, and sooner or later, we do not want a road with a goat track connecting to extremely modern roundabouts, and then you go back to a goat track, and then to another modern implement. We've got to bite the bullet, and we've got to fix that road up, fix it properly, and allow for the development. And, and I'm not too sure, but I've got a sneaking suspicion, that if you look along that road corridor, there will be some opportunities come up to actually create road reservations. And if we're not thoroughly alert to them now, we need to have them in our mind as to where they're going to be in the future to enable that road to be widened. But apart from that, I look forward to this development. I look forward to more affordable land coming on board.
Thank you.
We are talking about Pass Road, and I keep getting this, because it looks which makes me think that I've got the right motion.
Any other speakers on Pass Road?
Pass, yes, you've got it.
I was tempted. Okay, no further speakers, right reply? Alderman Blomley? I put motion for approval, subject to conditions and advice, all those in favour? Carried unanimously. So the final planning item is 11.3.6 was a DA for 239 Blye Street, or aimed for two multiple dwellings. Alderman Piers, thank you. Do we have a second, please? Alderman Blomley?
Yes, sir.
Alderman Blomley?
Yes, sir.
Other speakers? Alderman James?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On page 146 of the officer's report, under applause, or under the Parking and Access Code, D six point six point one A one, the number of car parking spaces on site is, under table D six one, is five spaces. And what's being proposed is four, with two per dwelling. No visitor space is proposed. If we go to the performance criteria then, if we look at the performance criteria, the reasons for the, the change or reduction is that there is under B on page 147, there is sufficient on-street parking available for visitors to the site. And we're talking here about Blye Street, and also its close proximity to Cambridge Road, because under C, it's also dealing with this question of on-site car parking, the availability and frequency of public transport within a 400-metre walking distance of the site. The congestion that's occurring in relation to Cambridge Road is getting worse as, as time goes by, and, and also to the fact that we are considering here, there is sufficient on-street parking available to visitors to the site. I think we have to be very careful in relation to car parking, because it's very easy to say, look, there's adequate parking, excuse me, on the Blye Street or any other street for that matter. But as the development occurs, and as the impact on traffic movements, in particular on Cambridge Road, happen, then there's going to be, I believe, more of an approach in relation to providing either the cash-in-look component or alternatively the holding to that provision of providing additional car parking space. It's becoming all too easy when the acceptable solutions spell out, and then we look for reasons in the performance criterias to say, well, there's adequate parking on the street. So therefore, that is, and that is the provision for us to determine as to whether or not the additional car parking space is, is required. I think this is an area that we need to look at. It's very easy for us to actually use our wriggle room under performance criteria to be able to say, well, look, there's adequate parking on the foreshore, close to a restaurant, there's adequate parking on the, on the streets, as distinct from what the actual code, Parking and Access Code, says in relation to car parking on site. Under the old scheme, we, in my, I can recall that we were very particular about the 2007 scheme. I know we have a new one, obviously that is the case. But at the same time, we still have the option of looking at the performance criteria and determining whether or not it is being met in relation to car parking or any other matter for that, for that purpose. I believe that the five spaces should have been obviously called in as part of the Acceptable Solutions Code for that particular matter. However, and I don't agree with the actual performance criteria reducing that by one.
Thank you, Alderman James. Other speakers? Alderman Mulder?
I was a little confused. Four car parking spaces, two per dwelling, and the only thing that's not proposed is no visitor space is proposed. I live on Clarence Street, it's a fairly busy street, although not quite as busy as it used to be, but now it's, and there's parking actually outside the house, and, you know, I don't have this amount of parking. I, I think we might be jumping at shadows here. I mean, if there's two cars per family, is about an average, I would think that if you've got three cars, then, you know, maybe you should leave them on the street. But there are patrols on the street. You can't leave your car parked there for more than, I think it's 12 hours now, and it gets towed away. So the idea that visitor parking can be on the street, for me, is fine.
Other speakers? Right reply, Alderman Piers?
Normally, I wouldn't bother, but I must answer the question that Alderman James raised. If you look at number 226 and 243, that's where Blye Street ends. So it's not like it's a continuous road. And, like, when I read this, I thought of parking to Alderman James, I'll tell you that now, that's what I thought. But there's not a lot of traffic up this end of the street, I can tell you. So, and the road ends there. So to miss one car park, and that's visitor car parking, I don't think it's a big issue.
Thank you. So the motion for chair is accrual, subject to conditions and advice, all those in favour? Against? Carried. And that concludes our business as a planning authority. 11.5.1, options to upgrade the gravel section of School Road to Sanford. Alderman Mulder?
I believe we've had circulated a motion that was promised on Friday, and as it has turned up now, I move that councillors-
We have received it.
Sorry, does everyone get a copy of that motion that's been circulated?
Yes.
We've got copies to circulate.
Okay.
Whose name and our request will be circulated if we want.
My explanation, Mr. Mayor, this matter was raised on Friday at the gender briefing. It was said that it would be circulated in the emails. I didn't receive it. It was quite clear who had asked for it to be drafted.
clear who had asked for it to be drafted, and I understand that maybe, you know, there have been a glitch in the process.
Look, can we circulate this alternative motion? It's essentially option one, as I, sorry, option two, as I understand it.
Can you put it up electronically? Here we go.
Okay. I'll just give everyone a chance to read that, and then call for a second up. Thank you, Alderman Kennedy. Alderman Mulder.
Very briefly, what the original proposal was, as discussed at a workshop, was that we would upgrade this section of road to the full standard, despite the fact that a number of developments down the track would produce headworks charges, that would allow the whole road to be developed up to the standard. By having, by taking this course, and there was some discussion at the workshop, and I must say, at the workshop, I wasn't particularly fussed about it, in the bottom line, if you read the officer's report, there's something like a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars worth of future headworks charges that we will not qualify for, because when those subdivisions come online, as they inevitably will, we will have, we will have already built the road to the standard, so we won't be able to, we won't be able to take headworks charges for infrastructure that already exists. Now, normally at this level, it wouldn't be too much, but we've just heard, and the thing that squated me to by Friday, from the Monday, was the decision in the, in the rates case with Southern Cross Home Care, and it just seems to me that, at this point in time, for us to go down and foregoing a potential a hundred and three, I think, or, but over a hundred thousand dollars in lost potential revenue, we probably, this is probably now the time between Monday, when it was such a good idea, and Friday, when it was no longer a good idea, I think that these are the sorts of things where we can start to at least reduce the impact of that rate charges, by not deferring forever, by actually upgrading part of the road, but not to the full standard, so that in future, when we do want to seal the road and make it up to the full standard, we will then have access to that future fund. So there is a question of equity too, and the fact is that, you know, we've taken headworks charges off one property developer down there, but we're not going to take them off the other if we go with option one. So I would just endorse some option, my alternative motion, which is basically option two, that we just upgrade it to a five-metre-wide gravel surface with minor drainage improvements, which then keeps the door open for a future acquisition. So it's not a great thing, but I think at this particular time of great uncertainty around council's future rate base, here is an opportunity to perhaps cushion that just a little bit for the time being.
Other speakers. Alderman James.
The question in relation to the rate base has really now become quite important in this particular debate, and can I say that I agonised over this since our briefing on Friday, because there was this question of upgrading it to the full potential, and then alternatively, doing these minor works as per option number two. So having said that, I think it's important that we do look at the big picture here, and there's a number of projects that are going to be carried forward from, yeah, from eighteen, nineteen, and also to full consideration in nineteen twenties budget. And I think if we're going to be careful in our consideration in relation to how much out of the pot is going to be spent, given that there has been this decision in relation to Southern Cross Homes, which most know my thoughts on that, and so on, so I don't need to go into that. So, and in response to the comments that were made on the, on the radio on Thursday, when I spoke regarding this, the question was put to me, how are we going to make the shortfall of about two hundred thousand in relation to the impact of Southern Cross and other organisations?
This planning item, please.
So having, having said that, I support option two. I think it's, we ought to just do what is necessary at this point in time, and then, as I said, down the track, we can look at the bigger picture when we have more funds available to us for projects.
Other speakers. Alderman Peers.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm not going to support it, Mayor, because I'm not going to put safety, I mean, I know it's a hundred and whatever, hundred and thirty...
Two thousand seven hundred dollars.
Well, it's not worth, in my opinion, if we're going to do this road, School Road, we've got to do it properly, we can't be mucking around and doing a little bit now and taking a bit of money and doing a bit more, I think we do it in one fair swoop and get it done. Now, this road, as we know, has got a lot more traffic on it now than when this was first proposed, and I've got to admit, as most of us have got calls from a certain person, we've been along this road, and, look, I don't think it's safe, I really do not think it's safe. I'd rather go with the officer's recommendation and do it properly in one go, because I'll tell you what, just to start mucking around and doing a bit here and doing a bit there, yes, I know it's going to cost, but, you know, what do you put on the price of safety? And I just think this needs to be done.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Just to clarify for a moment, Mr Mayor, did Alderman Peers, full shadow, that he moved the officer's recommendation, this motion unsuccessful?
Very good hearing, Alderman.
Well, I did, well, I did, Mr Mayor, I think that, I did full shadow, I'd be very happy to say, Alderman Peers is supportive of the officer's recommendation for a few very simple reasons. And the first one, I mean, this has been a council road now for, well, in excess of a hundred years. As we're advised by our, by our experts, this road isn't safe, we'd all agree that that's the case. So we now have an option, as, one of two options as to what we do. We either do it properly, option one, which we can afford to do, or we look at option two, the near enough is good enough, shield be right, mate, type of approach. This road is not safe, it is not safe. We opened it up through a German court, it's no longer a dead end, there are cars, there are water trucks racing up and down, they stretch the road very, very often. We opened it up, we have a responsibility to ensure that this road is safe for users, and I can tell you now that the feeling of disquiet of our residents beyond Lorddale, when they look at the upgrades to Acton Drive, and they look at the upgrades to South Terrace, and sure, they're important upgrades too, and that's, we're going into the budget process, as we all know very soon, we have to make priorities, we have to decide what projects get the tick. My very firm view is, this, this project was good enough on Friday, from around the table, and I take the point about High Court of lack of success with appeals to the High Court, and like Alderman James, we were two, I was going to say lone voices, we went lone, we were two voices in the wilderness on that one. But be that as it is, it doesn't give us an out and out to take half-hearted approaches to vital infrastructure upgrades in our city. This is an absolute no-brainer. When the money's there, let's do it, let's not hang around for the possibility of headwork charges down the track, near enough is not good enough, this city, and every resident here deserves the best we're able to provide, we're able to provide a sealed road, let's do it.
Thank you, Alderman Blomley. Other speakers. Okay, it's write a reply, Alderman Mulder.
How full persuasive arguments about leaving gravel roads are being half-done, half-measured, unsafe, when they're five metres wide. Not far from here, where the crow flies, is a road that is gravel, five metres wide is terribly unsafe and has two thousand traffic movements a day, but this council will not seal it. Here we have a road which has nothing like those levels of movement, will probably never have anything like those levels of movement, that we will bring up to the standard that we, as a council, think is fit for Begonia Street, and it's two thousand cars, but we people, but it's now being described as half-baked, not near enough, not good enough, won't be safe, and we have a plan in the future to upgrade it and to seal it. We are not half-baked, and that will be the end of it, these are the foundation works over which it will cost a lot less money to seal than if we went ahead and did it now, and the reason it would cost less money is because there are headworks charges. Now, we have taken headworks charges, and there's an equity issue here, of one developer, but we are not now going to, we're going to give the others a free kick. And I really think that as a matter of equity, if nothing else, we should wait until those, until everyone else lines up, sticks their hand in their till, in their pocket, and then we do it. In the meantime, we make it up to a road that is of sufficient standard, that we have deemed is sufficient for other areas in the city, with a lot more traffic, and I think that if we went to the point of doing this, now, a hundred thousand may not be big in the scheme of things, but as we've heard, some of these decisions have a potential of a four percent impact on the rate base. These are important matters. Now, I'm not saying that we should not build infrastructure, what I'm saying is that what we are doing by taking option one is we are actually foregoing some revenue opportunities. And those are the sorts of offsets that we should be looking for across the board. I look forward to support for this, for the reasons stated.
So the motion is as presented on the screen there, by Alderman Mulder, all those in favour? Against? The motion is carried. Seven point five point two is the recreational needs analysis at council adopset, and part two is that we, in principle, form a new committee. Sorry, is there an alternative?
Just slot a chance at the word, I think.
Ah, okay, yeah, I do have a copy of that, is, can we have that on the screen, please? So do we have a second up?
Wait on, what, what?
Oh, so the copy hasn't gone around?
What copy would?
No, this is really going to improve, Mr Mayor. Well, so I want to make one last comment. The advice I got was whilst there was an alternative motion discussed, no one specifically asked for an alternative motion, so we've got it prepared, but no one's actually asked for it, so it hasn't been distributed. Right, we have it distributed, but my understanding is when no one asks for it, we generally don't circulate.
And nor...
This is what I'm confused about, I was going to move this one.
Well, let me say that from a chair's point of view, if, if it's essentially the same motion with just a minor change, then I'm willing to accept it, but if it is a significant one that requires a lot of new input, then clearly it becomes very difficult to accept.
Sorry, Mr Mayor, I'm also just advised that what the alternative that I think is proposed to be moved was circulated on Friday electronically.
Well, it didn't.
Well, I didn't accept it.
All right, well, look, be that as it may, I am willing to accept the motion up there, but I am quite, I'm quite happy to give everyone the opportunity to read it before we go further.
So whose motion is?
Well, that was the one that we proposed when we discussed.
There's a difference.
The only difference is that we've said that we will adopt the report, and then we'll move towards establishing the subcommittee, without actually saying that we're going to actually do it. So we've still got to go through the process of coming up with the constitution, the regulations, and the...
So the word considers the committee is in there, rather than establishes the committee?
And, Mr Mayor, that's what we discussed on Friday, and it's a minor change, and that's exactly what you, yeah, look, it's no problem.
The only change is that we're considering the committee rather than forming a committee.
My apologies, that was...
Okay. So do we have a second up, please? Thank you, Alderman Kendy. Alderman Newton.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Look, I suppose the, you know, either way, I've been happy to lock us into, to committee to move the subcommittee in this respect, I mean, now being the Chair of the Tracks and Trails and the Bike Committee, and then having a look at, when I read the Recreation Report, it seemed, you know, a major gap in our committee structure to actually look at this issue of not only sports ground and the passive recreation infrastructure that we need to provide for our community, that deals with transparency and community engagement issues, which I think are pretty important, I mean, this sort of stuff being involved in sport for a long period of time, there's often times when I've thought, why did that place get up and not that one get funded, and this, you know, I just think gives us a way to actually pull all that together. And I suppose, you know, a couple of things that everyone came out today, and was glowing about what we've achieved with the, with the bike park, and I just hope that with something like this, we can look at other innovative public recreation infrastructure that is a bit outside the square, that we haven't really considered in the past, and I suppose it's a vehicle to actually get a better community input, and get some wiser heads to get around and come up with some different things that we can actually do for our community. So I think certainly this step is a good step, and I certainly support, you know, moving down this path, so, you know, I encourage everyone else to do so.
Thank you, Alderman Kendy.
Since this was first discussed, I made it very evident that I was very much in support of the consideration of this committee.
I'm glad we actually decided to incorporate the word considers in there, and that is on the basis of our discussions on Friday, and that was one of the key matters that I suppose that I was hoping that it wasn't a fait accompli from the outset, and by adding one word in there, we did talk about in principle support and so on and so forth, and considers is pretty much on the same lines as that. So, look, there is, there is a possibility that we may have a lot more work to do before we actually set up this special committee, and so that's fine, it will come out in the wash as far as the debate at the time will occur. I would like to ask a question of Mr Graham here, and it may be that I missed something when we were considering the recreation needs analysis, and that was in relation, he's gone, I know, I always get mixed up, you know, when they trot up their, their...
The goal from planning.
Yeah, that's right, yes. The Rosny, the Rosny Tennis Club, or tennis clubs, were not mentioned specifically in the, in the report, and there was discussion at the workshop in relation to that. Could you just bring me up to speed in relation to whether or not Rosny did get a tick in the box, or was it sort of left as another item to be put in the too-hard basket in relation to whether or not tennis clubs generally ought to be included in relation to this?
Through, Mr Mayor, page forty-five indicates a consideration of tennis clubs, which Rosny Park is there in terms of the membership numbers, and page forty-seven talks about the strategic direction which we're looking in terms of liaising with the state sporting organisation, where they want to plan, where council can collaborate with them in terms of planning for tennis within our municipality.
Alderman Peers.
Thank you, Mayor. I was wondering why the word considers, because I actually think, I was quite happy with the original motion, establish a new special committee, but anyway, I'm quite happy with that, I'll support that, because like Alderman Newton said, I think, you know, we've got to cajole things and get things right. I mean, I've had a hell of a lot in my time here with sporting clubs, as most of you will know, and I really think this committee, this committee is essential. There's some things in this report that I'm not quite happy with, some of the things I do not agree with, but work through that, let's get the constitution going, and we can work through that, and I think we really need to set this committee, I don't think we should consider it, I think we actually need it.
Other committee, speakers, sorry? Alderman Mulder, I hate to consider you as a committee, so I'll be quite clear about that.
Look, I, the principle of having a committee to get all this stuff is fine, but I think the point, and it was raised at the workshop on Friday, is I don't think we're ready yet to commit to an actual committee, because we haven't even seen the constitution as a committee, we don't even know its roles, its responsibilities, we don't know, for example, how, how the Howler Recreation Centre, or the Howler Activity Centre, or whatever its name is these days, which is actually a bit of a peak body for a lot of these sporting organisations that are in that precinct, to come to council with the ideas for infrastructure and things like that. So, you know, I'm not saying that we devotedly cling to our current structures, and there is a role for some sort of a coordinating mechanism, but I'm looking forward to how our staff, when they're writing this constitution, sort of separate out the roles and functions, like, you know, which committee do you go to when you're complaining about your courts needing resurfacing or something like that? So there are some machinery issues we probably need to sort out about here. Now, I, for one, am not in great favour of excessive number of committees, and if we could find a way in which we could get the facilities committees and the recreational committees, when those...
get the facilities committees and the recreational committees, when those facilities are basically for recreation, I think there are some really good opportunities there. Do we need one for every little locality? Or is council's policy sufficiently broad that maybe we can talk about incorporating all council premises within our overarching committee? But these are matters that I look forward to thrashing out when we start talking about the constitution of this committee. So in principle, I like, it's a great idea. There's a little bit more work to be done, I think, in the thing. And I think that's why I'm very happy to support the alternative, which is that the consideration of the committee be established. Because within that, there may be all sorts of knock-on effects and adjustments to other committees of council, and hopefully we'll get rid of a couple.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Mr Mayor, firstly, my apologies. I was aware of the, in hindsight of this alternative motion being circulated Friday afternoon following our Friday briefing. Like other elected members here, I'm, feather recreation needs analysis informative. I didn't agree with everything that I read, but I'm not the expert. It was illuminating in some respects. I think that there's absolutely no doubt that we need to establish this committee. I didn't go so far as to suggest that the constitution ought to be worked through at a workshop in the very near future. And to go a step further, and just to flag that my position at this present point in time, is the membership ought to only consist of elected members, and there'd be three elected members. I don't want a special committee that actually, because it involves a very important area of sport, where there is bias, perceived or otherwise, there is power between different clubs. I think that we open ourselves up to not a very comfortable situation. So can I just flag now that my desire is a constitution that reflects three elected members of this body to be members of that consultative committee? And if it was to be my choice, Mr Mayor, I'd strongly recommend and support Alderman Piers, Alderman Newington, Alderman Kennedy to be members of such a committee. But obviously, that's a matter of consideration at a workshop. I'm entitled to my view, and I'm entitled to express it in this place. So just for the record, putting that on, mentioning it now this evening. Thank you.
Again, thank you, Mr Mayor. So we have a document, and again, it's not perfect, but it is informative, and it's a more informative resource than councils past have had. And it is an area that we should be stepping up our governance in and making sure that the dollars that we have to allocate, and there is finite resources and almost in finite demand, that we are judicious and using it appropriately. And I think that will help with this. I'm not going to use some of the rhetorical flourish I've said in the past about how we've gone about it. But this is part of the evolution in getting better in this space. And the better we get, then the better it is for recreation, et cetera. So I don't have any particular preset views on how the committee will perform, but it's something that we'll all come together on as we start the whole process. It will be that the darts and snooker clubs are the best people to be sorting it out.
Oh, no, thank you, Mr Mayor. I'm struck that there seems to be a bit of support to go down this path, and I certainly welcome the opportunity to discuss this further with my colleagues and come up with a mix that actually gives us the opportunity to, you know, deal with some of those issues we talked about, about transparency. One sporting group or one community getting a little bit of a, bit more of a say than what they probably should. And I think, you know, it's a great opportunity for us to look at all those issues, you know, as we deal with it. So I encourage us all to, so, yeah.
The motion is as presented, slight amendment for the officer's recommendation. All those in favour? Against? Carried unanimously, I think. Moving on to eleven point seven point one, under governance, the renaming of the Clarens and Vale Greenbelt. Alderman Chong? Seconded Alderman Piers, I think.
Just very briefly, Mr Mayor, obviously one community together have been working for some time to deal with the issues in public spaces, and the park in this area, and Wasch Willan in Greenveil. They seem quite supporting the community, or very much with its pride of enhancing the community and being the community. And they have provided, at least three names, the Clarens and Vale Greenveil Park was the top one that came out this year.
Sorry, Alderman Piers.
Thank you. I concur with Alderman Chong's sentiments, and I think it's a great name. So totally support the recommendation.
You'll leave? Yes. Look, I commend the committee and the work that they did. I'm a little bit disappointed that our Aboriginal community sought not to put something forward. But that would have been of interest. I'm not too sure that we automatically have to accept the recommendations, as I find some of the names unpronounceable, which I suppose they did when we came along speaking English. However, that particular area is an example of really good urban planning in the sense of that big green corridor through there. And unfortunately, as Alderman Chong and I have both, on a number of occasions, put on the rubber gloves and wandered around with the big bags, picking up the rubbish, which is a little unfortunate, but that's the nature of the beast. And maybe if we give the park some ownership and put a little bit more effort into it, maybe then, and as always, it's not the community, and everyone likes to just pour the bucket on the community. But the two or three or four individuals who think that, you know, we no longer need the mattress, we'll just tip it over the back fence and those sorts of things. But I think this is a progress towards giving it some ownership. It's now got a space. It's now got a name. Perhaps they won't think it's just paddocks, but it's their backyard. And I think some communities, and I look at some of the plans that are now being brought forward, and I think we've got a lot to learn from the housing department. And even if I look at the Glebe Hill development, there's large open spaces behind houses where people can, you know, walk and exercise their dogs, and not, you know, overcrowded and build tiki-taki, and not maximise every inch of space. And for the developers, and in this case, it was the state government, who have created these open spaces within our urban communities, I think we're all the before better for it. The only thing we've got to watch is if we don't go sticking hundreds of dog boxes in them.
So we rename the Greenveil, the Clarens and Vale Community Park. All those in favour? Carried unanimously. Sorry? Yeah, there's a report that the nomination board doesn't have a role in this. Okay. Seven point seven point two is Local Government Association Tasmania President and General Management Committee Elected. Alderman Mulder?
Mayor, I do apologise for the late circulation, but it was an idea that cropped up to me only when I properly read the minutes. I've circulated a motion, and I've been advised that it's not a procedural motion, so it doesn't require an absolute majority of council or anything else like that. The mayor advises me that I'm free to stand up and move this, provided I get a second. So-
Thank you, Alderman Warren. Alderman Mulder, you have the floor?
Yes. The only reason I put this up is because we are sort of going down this path that we have to nominate someone. That if someone chooses to put up a nomination, then we'll do it. And there's no debate around the policy about whether we should or we shouldn't nominate it. And in the reasons that I've explained, and I'll go through them for the benefit of the gallery who probably can't see them, that, there are a few things. Council has not demanded, the merits or otherwise, of actually nominating any Alderman to the management committee, or from there to become the president. The, as I understand it, the general management council was, by mutual agreement, rotated between the three councils in our electorate division, Glanork and Kingra. And you've got this convoluted structure where those three councils form a region, Hobart automatically gets a chair, the other regions throughout the state get, you know, are in different regions, and they get so many votes. And it is a really, you know, a strange thing, which makes the American Presidential Electoral College look like a simple first past the post counting system. But I just thought that it was an opportunity here. I've been contacted by some people from both Glanork and Kingra, who were, you know, sort of doing some back channel. Now, and in Glanork in particular, and it's a pity the deputy mayor's gone, has not been apparently represented on the, represented the electoral district of the councils for about the last fifteen years. And I think that, you know, there's a bit of equity here. I mean, we all need a bit of a chop at it. So I'm sure, Deputy Mayor, you'll be free to stand up and correct me. But it hasn't been represented for a long time. And I also understood that Kingra won't actually be nominating any of their councillors either, because, you know, they have a feeling it might be Glanork's turn. So, you know, I just think that there's an opportunity to debate about whether or not we, you know, members have a do. Whether you do or you don't, that's entirely up to you. But it's just one of these little, you know, the committee of the committee of the committee. And the mayor might actually like to explain to us, too, that when it comes to voting, or, so this is nominating for an election, the mayor might like just to explain to us who actually gets to elect, because on one stage, it's the mayor, according to the protocols and procedure of his councils. Well, I'm not quite sure what the protocols and procedures of his council are. So, you know, the mayor going off, I'm sure he'll come to a workshop and discuss with us who he's going to vote for or not. But I just think some of this, you know, there's just a lack of transparency and accountability and upfrontage-ness about how it all works. And so I think that we should have an opportunity. And I just think that with good grace, I think it's, you know, our mayor has served with some distinction as the president for some considerable time. Maybe it's time that, in a good neighborly approach, we let one of the other councils represent the electoral district for a while.
Alderman Warren?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I don't feel particularly comfortable with either of these motions. But I support Alderman Mulder's motion, because the original motion, I don't know who's going to be nominated. I'm not privy to that information. It wasn't discussed.
That, just procedurally, if this motion is defeated, then I'll be calling for nominations from the floor. And if I receive more than one, any particular appointment, then we'll conduct a ballot.
And that's my issue, that I would rather that had happened before we had to conduct the ballot, because it's difficult to make those decisions on the floor and have people present their cases. And then, yeah. So I don't feel comfortable with that process. I'm persuaded that it would be good to have Glanork have a turn, and so I will support Alderman Mulder's motion.
Okay. Look, I'd like to enter the debate at this stage. Once again, as a, as an Alderman and your local rep, no, I'm not your local rep. I've separately been elected as president of Elgat. But clearly, there's a thirst for further knowledge about how the process works. First of all, it is incorrect. Alderman Christie Johnson was the rep before Alderman Chong was for the three councils. And she actually, there was a legal case put forward by her council to say that she shouldn't have been the rep because she'd nominated herself. So there's an underlying absolute principle that the members are the councils. And even though the mayors might represent the councils, it's a council decision on who nominates, and it's a council decision on the voting that takes place. So that when there is an election for any of these positions, it will be all the councils in southern Tasmania, except for Hobart, which has an ex officio appointment that votes. So in the case of the three large councils in southern Tasmania, there's Glanork, Kingra, and Clarence, there's able to be one representative for those three councils. But the other eleven councils in southern Tasmania get to choose who that representative is. Now, when Alderman Chong was elected, she defeated Mayor Wass from Kingra in an open and free election. One interesting aspect that comes out of the legal cases that were disputed over Alderman Johnson's election was that we had advice from both sides of the case that the, it had to be the council and not the mayor that could nominate. But secondly, we were advised from an Elgat point of view that it was extremely bad practice to have these old boy networks or old girl networks, or whatever you call them, whereby people take it in turns, that it was highly appropriate, that it's an elected position, and there should be elections and competitions for these spots. On the general management committee, it's the, the general management committee is actually the board of directors for Elgat. It's got a highly significant role in terms of the direction that Elgat takes with advocacy, and how it goes about its business. And it also, for example, in the CEO's case, as with the council's case, the general management committee appoints the chief executive officer and also conducts the annual performance review. So the positions on GMC are really important and responsible positions. They, there's two from the south, two from the north, two from the northwest, plus a separately elected president, who currently is myself, and the lord mayor, who's their ex officio. So there's a total of eight on that committee. So I would strongly urge this council, you may choose not to nominate anyone, and that's fine. But I think any decision you make ought to be in the context that it's healthy to have an election for these positions, and we need good credible candidates competing for these positions. Thank you. Alderman Edwards?
I would have liked to have got in before you there, Mayor. I just had a few sort of concerns I wanted to raise, was about, which you have sort of covered off on, is was, you know, I probably may have taken the convention more formally than I should have, in terms of why we'd be seeking to break it. And also, obviously, we're here to represent Clarence and put Clarence's best foot forward at any vote, I suppose. But does this step potentially weaken our position into the future? I guess the deputy mayor might have a chance to adjust that.
Alderman Walker?
I will upfront foreshadow that if this motion is unsuccessful, I intend to, at the very least, move recommendation B, and that I'll be suggesting and putting forward Alderman Chong again as a nominee. I think it is, it is important that it was a contested ballot last time. I'm comfortable that we, that, you know, that we shouldn't feel troubled by doing that again. It will be an interesting election contest. I do note that the voting block is effectively the rest of STCA, so it will be, and, you know, there are strategies around voting or canvassing for votes, including actually speaking to prospective voters. And I don't know that all candidates bothered to do that last time.
Sorry, Alderman James?
Yes, look, it's interesting to hear comments in relation to putting forward a, or nominating an Alderman for these positions. And in fact, we had the debate on STCA nearly a short while ago, and there was all support around the table that we discontinue with that, in that particular roles function. And here we have now probably a majority decision. I could say that we should move, it would appear, move towards nominating an Alderman as candidate for the election of president, and also the other. And I will not be supporting this motion, because I think we need to have representatives on this. The simple fact of the matter is, and many of the comments I made in relation to continuing with STCA are very similar in relation to the roles and functions and the organisation in relation to the LGA, Local Government Association of Tasmania. So in actual fact, I think we need to have our representation here in that forum. And also, too, it's a peak body of local government in Tasmania. I haven't been to a Local Government Association AGM for about five years. I tend to like to get out amongst the people, and notwithstanding that others would have huge benefits from being a member of the, and attending the local government conferences. But at the end of the day, I think we need to have the election that's obviously listed on the agenda for this evening, and we'll just ascertain the actual successful or otherwise candidates in relation to that.
Thank you. I agree with Alderman James. I strongly believe that we should at least nominate as a president and also as a committee member. I'm just amazed that you would think that one of the biggest councils is not going to go through the process and just say, oh, no, no, we're not going to nominate anybody. To me, that's just lazy. To me, that's just lazy. I think we should be proudly putting up nomination. I think we should be proudly putting up nomination for president and committee member. We may not, we may not go any further than that, as you say. It's, you know, it's the other, uh, the other part of STCA and they may not like us that much. But look, I really believe that, you know, the Local Government Association, it's, it's, it is, as Alderman James said, the peak body. And I cannot believe we would say, no, we're not going to worry about it. I, uh, I think someone else said they were going to move this recommendation. I like A and B and I'd, I'd certainly, if no one's going to move it, I'd certainly move it.
Hold on, please. Paul John.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I won't talk about whether I should be a good nomination or not. But I will say, when I stood last time, is that a number of people have said now, I think it's really important that we contest this election, that we don't blindly go rotating around the, the councils. That's not good governance. Good governance is to give people a choice. In that particular instance, I put my hand up last time and that's what it gets from Mayor Wass. That's not to say I will necessarily be the Alderman that you choose tonight. You may choose somebody else and that's fine. But I do think as a big council in this region, as Alderman Pearce said, it's very important that we actually take part in Elgat and we do at least have a say in what happens on the General Management Committee.
Hold on.
Shall I move my motion be put?
Okay, it's a procedural motion. Um, all those in favour?
That's the motion being put.
That's what I'm talking about. The procedural motion has to be put. Do we have a second for the procedural motion? I do need a second for the procedural motion. Thank you, Alderman Von Berto. So we do have a procedural motion, that the motion be put. All those in favour of the procedural motion? Against? The, uh, motion will be put. So the motion is that council decides not to nominate. All those in favour? Against? So, uh, we now go to the foreshadowed motion. Let me deal with the A and B first of all. So I will call for nominations for A, that council nominates an Alderman as candidate for the election of president of the Local Government Association of Tasmania.
Need a nominee.
I'm, I'm calling for nominations.
All right. I thought you were doing a breaking it up there.
Yeah, yeah, I'm just calling for nominations for president for first instance.
I nominate John Pearce.
Alderman Pearce, are you willing to, uh?
Oh, absolutely not.
Are there any other nominations for president?
I nominate Brendan Blomley.
Alderman Blomley, are you willing to, uh, be nominated? Okay, are there any other nominations?
Uh, I nominate Alderman Chong.
Alderman, sorry. Okay, Alderman Chong, are you willing to be nominated for president?
No, thank you.
Okay. Uh, are there any other, sorry, any other nominations for president? In that case, I declare Alderman Blomley as our nominee for president for Elgat. Moving on to part B, are there any nominations for the, um, committee members of Southern Electoral District?
As I did last time, I wish to nominate Alderman Chong and hope she's successful in, in going forward in that role.
Other nominations for, um, for the electoral district?
I'd like to nominate Alderman Mulder.
Alderman Mulder, are you willing to undertake?
No.
Thank you. Are there any other nominations for the position of committee member?
Alderman James.
Alderman James, are you willing to undertake? Okay, so we now have two. Are there any other nominations before we go to ballot?
Uh, yes, I nominate Alderman Blomley.
Um, okay, well, we can probably have one for each, I imagine. So are you willing to accept committee? Okay, so we have a three-way race at this stage. Are there any other nominations? Okay, could I ask the three candidates to leave the room, please, and we'll conduct a ballot?
Process with the ballot is if you could mark your preferred candidate. Uh, in the event that no candidate has an absolute majority, the candidate with the least number of votes drops out and there will be a second ballot. It's not preferential, no. It's first one past the post if, if there's a majority.
So in ticking the form, do you want ones or twos or just a tick on?
No, just, just the preferred candidate, please.
Okay.
Mayor, so if hypothetically, hypothetically, Brendan Chong president, then who would?
Good hypothetical.
When you were president, who was a committee member?
Well, Heather was, yeah.
That created the vacancy that Alderman Chong was elected to.
No, uh, Alderman Christie Johnson was elected to fill my vacancy. Yeah, yeah, you're right. Oxy.
Oh, that's mad easy. You have a tied vote with all good, you have nine votes. There are four for Alderman Chong, four for Alderman Blomley and one invalid vote.
Well, what do you recommend?
Let's do it again, so we don't have the valid vote.
Well, uh, we, uh, uh, no, it's really simple. We, uh...
I think it's a matter of draw straws.
No, because...
I'm sorry, no, you've heard the list again, that was Alderman James. Gets invited back in and you re-vote.
Exactly.
Correct, sorry. Correct, I was beginning that aspect.
Now, there's a real chance of fireball, isn't there? And we do draw straws. We, uh, can, can we, and, uh, General Manager, re-explain the voting rules to see if we can avoid an invalid vote?
Um, can you? Please just place a mark, a tick or a cross or a number or a symbol of some sort against the preferred candidate. There are two candidates, Alderman Chong and Alderman Blomley. I'll give you down the drawing straws, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, well, um, it comes out of a hat, so how are you going to organise that?
Simply, um, you can either, you can draw it out of a hat, you can toss a coin, you can do whatever you like. I have so many, I have established protocol for that.
Got a coin? What, what about, you got the balls there, so you put the...
What are you suggesting you make a carry of?
Put, put a coin in, put a coin in two balls and let them draw.
What are your good pleas?
I'll put the two names in. Whichever one is drawn out.
That's it, yeah, yeah. You could invite them in for the, uh, for the final draw.
Jonathan Lapalio to come in. No, he's the driver from Survivor Strands.
So who are you going to give first choice?
You, you're going to tell me who you want to draw the preferred candidate or do you want?
Get them, get them in and off from the whole age.
Do move the motion. Yeah, I move the motion. Alderman Walker.
Alderman Walker gets to do the draw.
We're drawing ditch straws, but in this case blue balls.
Can he open, can he open it?
Go to open it before we go now.
Exactly.
Johnny Pearce.
Congratulations to Alderman Blomley. Um, not sure, not sure what, I'm not sure what happens if you win both.
Yes.
Well, um, eighteen sixteen of the constitution deals with that. I'm sure. When a member, we're a member of the General Management Committee, subsequently elected president, a recount of votes for the population category in the electoral district that the president represented shall be held to fill the vacancy. If there are no votes to recount, the council or councillors concerned shall fill the vacancy in accordance with Rule twenty, insofar as practicable. And you really don't want me to go through Rule twenty, but there is permission to be.
Essentially, there's...
Over three pages of Rule twenty will be all this issue. Thank you.
Okay, um, moving on to item twelve, Alderman's question time, there are no matters on notice. Uh, questions without notice, start with Alderman Mulder.
At its last meeting, council approved fifteen visitor accommodation units in Petchy Street at a density that would not be permitted for long stay residential accommodation. It is clear from the developer's own traffic impact statement that the site is intended to be used as a mix of long-term and short-term accommodation.
Point of order, Mr. Mayor, question, please.
We do need the question, please.
Sorry, Mr. Mayor, if I just asked a question, it wouldn't make any sense. Given the accommodation crisis in Greater Hobart, A, what enforcement action is planned should the developer begin renting units on a long-term basis? And B, what enforcement action has ever been taken at the Richmond Caravan Park where many of the sites are clearly occupied on a permanent basis?
Um, Mr. Mayor, I have to take that on notice. The only comment I would make in relation to the Richmond Caravan Park, I would suspect it's been there for such a period of time that probably predates the, the current provisions of the scheme. Nonetheless, we will take that question on those and provide an answering report.
Just a short one, obviously, uh, it's a pretty profound thing that we have to happen to the museum on Friday. Uh, I'm wondering about the opportunity potentially for the council perhaps having a dialogue for residents in the area, the one we should express their, uh, their opinions and, um, their wishes. And that would be something we send to the Rossdale City Council, uh, and so on. We can investigate how that might be done. We can follow that.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, my question is probably to Mr. Graham, I imagine. Bayfield Street, when do we, as a council, take it over? And the other question will be, when do we do a final inspection of actual Bayfield Street itself? The work being done?
Alderman Blomley.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. This is an issue that I raised with you on Friday afternoon following the very successful citizenship ceremony in this very chamber where ten Clarence residents from seven countries were welcomed as Australian citizens. Mr. Mayor, as we discussed at that time, the national anthem was not sung. Uh, and, uh, as far as past practice of this council's...
Point of order, Mr. Mayor, question.
Well, the question is, Mr. Mayor, are you aware that according to the Australian Citizenship Ceremony's code, uh, in particular, chapter ten, um, important elements of the ceremony under the heading National Anthem, it reads, the Australian National Anthem Advanced Australian Fair must be played at the end of the ceremony. This may be played as live performance or recording.
Point of order, Mr. Mayor, a question.
Well, he is still, uh, he, yeah, I, I interpret what he is actually saying as part of the question that he's worded.
Oh, I would be.
However, I, I do get the gist of the question.
Yeah, yeah, well, Mr. Mayor, bearing in mind that this is the actual code for this very important ceremony, can you assure this council that in the future, Advanced Australian Fair will be sung following the ceremony as directed by the ministerial code?
Perdóname discussions, uh, last week, I have investigated the matter and it will be in future, yes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Alderman Edwards.
Um, I could, I, uh, appreciate the update you gave on Southern Cross Care at the start of the meeting. Could I just get you to repeat the, um, impact on rates? I didn't quite catch the first figure that you used before one percent.
I will circulate the, uh, the note. It, it will be, what I said will be tabled in the minutes and the information will be available. And, and, Mr. Nelson, if you could circulate that to Alderman, please, um, before the minutes go out. Thank you. Alderman, Alderman James?
Yes, two questions, thank you. Uh, firstly, um, what's the timeline for the, um, affordable housing development project at Berksworth to come up to council? Um, freely, Mr. Mayor, it hasn't yet come off exhibition, uh, depending on the, the number and the extent of representations that are received. Um, one would expect that there'll be some time taken to carefully analyse and report on those. Uh, well, it won't come probably to a formal council meeting. It will come to a special council meeting because of the value of the development being in excess of $10 million. I would expect sometime in the next month or so.
Thank you. Uh, the second question in relation to Rossney Hill and that proposal that's sort of been on the, on the back burner. Have we any indication as to when, uh, Professor Morris Nun will be, uh, considering lodging a DA? Or is, has there been any discussions with council officers with a sort of a timeline for that?
Um, freely, Mr. Minister Nelson, I wish to add to this, but I'm unaware yet of a specific timeline. Where there have been, uh, as I think I answered at the last council meeting, discussions ongoing with, um, I might call them de pipwee, but, um, Parks and Wildlife, the deputy secretary there. And my understanding, and I haven't had a briefing on this today since I've returned from a period of leave, but my understanding is we're still awaiting some written advice from the departmental secretary, or deputy secretary, rather, in relation to actual process. So until that's resolved, I don't, wouldn't expect to see anything formally tabled.
Alderman Walker. Thank you. Um, so time for close meeting, and I think the persistent members of the public who have endured the distance, thank you. And could I have a motion going into committee, please? Alderman Pearce. Second up, Alderman Edmonds. Over. Carried unanimously.